That might sound a little soft because I got a new speaker here. So I'm really hoping everything records right. Supposed to pick the sound up in the room.
That's our microphone.
It's a microphone, yeah. It's supposed to pick the volume up a lot better in this room Jake. Recommended it when I told him that the laptop one wasn't doing the greatest, so.
Okay.
As always, please enunciate.
Microphone only and not a speaker as well.
It is a speaker too, but I've got the speakers on. So we could hear what's coming out of the TV. I've got that on, I'm using that for the mic. This is a test. I tested it before I left for home to have dinner, so as far as I know, everything's working.
All right, six o'clock. I will call the. City Council Public Hearing to order. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will turn it over to you, Kristina.
Thank you. Okay, so this public hearing is the first reading of an amendment to. Our Chapter Six Lakeview Cemetery Ordinance. I will read. The ordinance amendments in totality. And then if anybody has any questions. I will take those. So, hang on your cookies, here I go.
Got plenty of water? Are you going to read the legal description?
I am not reading the legal description, no.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. The City Council of Blackduck, Minnesota ordains Section One. Section 601 Description slash Name is amended as follows with deleted language struck out and new language in red. By the way, there are copies of this on the table if you wanted to follow along with me. A cemetery has been established and is continued upon land owned by the city in said section. Noted by Ron. It is updated because of the properties that the city had that got annexed back. Annexed into the municipal boundary and that's one of the reasons. The legal description is now updated. Section two. Under 602 Officers and Duties is amended as follows with deleted language struck out and new language in red. Subdivision one. Responsibility for the management of Lakeview Cemetery and all matters relating thereto shall be vested in the city of Blackduck. The city of Blackduck Public Works Department shall be responsible for the care and maintenance of the cemetery. The city administrators shall be responsible for the cemetery records and the administering deeds to the public. Subdivision two, the Lakeview Cemetery. Will be open to visitors during the hours of sunrise to sunset. Permission to enter. At all other times shall be secured from the city. The city of Blackduck reserves. The right to refuse admission to the cemetery and to refuse the use of any of the cemetery's facilities. And at any time to any person or persons whom the city may deem objectionable to the best interests of the cemetery. During the snow season, the access to the cemetery roads may be blocked and only one foot traffic allowed. Section three. 603 Sale of Cemetery Lots is amended as follows with deleted language struck out and new language in red subdivision one. The price of cemetery lots, vaults. Rental fee and other services may be established from time to time by the city council. In the ordinance establishing fees and charges. Any person paying the price thus fixed for any lot shall be entitled to a deed conveying the same executed. By the mayor and city administrator. Upon full payment of the purchase price of a lot or lots. The city of Blackduck will issue a cemetery deed conveying the lot executed by the city. And the deed shall be recorded in the records of the city. Said deed shall be for the purpose of intermittent only. And shall be drawn subject to all the laws, rules and regulations of the city. Section four. 604 Transfer of Lots Shall be amended by adding the following language. The owner of the cemetery lot or grave may transfer lots. One, to the city of Blackduck at the original sale price minus perpetual care. Two. By will to any of his or her relatives. Who may survive him or her for the use and benefit of the person designated in the will. Or three, by will to other persons not related to him or her for the use and benefit of the person designated in the will. In all cases, the owner must complete and have signed by witnesses and in order republic of. A transfer of ownership document provided by the city of Blackduck. The transfer of ownership document must be approved by the city prior to the transfer of lots by owner. When a transfer has been made in conformance with these rules, such transfer shall be recorded in the cemetery records. Section five, 604 Deposits Shall be amended to section 605. The city requires a deposit for headstones. If a headstone is not properly installed within eighteen months of bury after burial. The city may use the deposit to purchase and install a headstone to identify the occupant of the gravesite. The city shall from time to time establish the headstone deposit amount by resolution. The city will refund the deposit upon proper installation of the headstone by the party who made the deposit. Section six, 605. Care and maintenance. Shall be amended to be section 606 and deleted language struck out and language in red added subdivision one. The city of Blackduck shall provide general care for the cemetery, which shall include maintenance of roadways. Mowing grass, trimming and caring for trees and removal of fallen trees. This shall not include providing special care such as watering lawns. Or bases temporarily placed on the graves. The city shall have the right to remove trees, shrubs, plants or any structures now located upon any burial site. Which has or shall become by reason of age or otherwise unsightly. Or detrimental to the site upon which they are located. Or any adjacent site or avenue. And upon notification of the relatives if possible and shall have the right to remove any such trees, shrubs, plants or any structures. Which may be placed on the site contrary to the provision of these regulations. Subdivision two. Artificial flowers may be placed. In the approved urns or vases two weeks prior and two weeks. After Memorial Day. Flowers may be securely fashioned. Must be securely fastened to the urn or vase so that they will not fall or be blown from the container. And cause problems with mowing. No artificial flowers, flags or decorations of similar nature. Shall be placed upon or attached to any grassy area. Any tree or shrub. Such flower. Improperly placed may be removed by the city. Any flowers, flags or decorations may be removed after ten days. Of being placed on the burial site in order to maintain orderly appearance. Subdivision three. No gravesite ground of planting trees, shrubs and flowers will be permitted. The city reserves the right to remove any tree, shrub, vine plant or flower which may be unsightly. Dangerous or not keeping with the landscape design of the cemetery. Subdivision four. The city of Blackduck cannot be held responsible for any damages, loss or theft of any personal property such as flowers, plants, decorations, vases. Cracks, markers, monuments, etc. Section seven, 606. Conduct in the cemetery shall be amended to be six section 607 and deleted. Language struck out and language in red added. Subdivision one. Persons visiting the cemetery or attending funerals are strictly prohibited from writing upon, defacing. Or damaging any memorial or breaking or injuring. Any tree, shrub, plant or other structure within the cemetery grounds. Subdivision two. The following acts are expressly prohibited. As well as any violations of city ordinances and regulations that may apply. A, the driving of motor vehicles into the cemetery unless attending a funeral. Visiting a relative or friend's gravesite or carrying on maintenance work other authorized by the city with a speed limit. Not to exceed ten miles per hour. B, the driving or parking of any motor vehicle across or upon any grave. Or lot except by authorized personnel. C, bringing of lunches or refreshments into the cemetery or consuming them on the grounds. D, peddling or soliciting the sale of any commodity within the cemetery. E, placing of signs, notices or advertisements of any kind within the cemetery. F, bringing firearms into the cemetery except in the nature of a military salute or escort. Accompanying a veteran's funeral or attending memorial services. Or by police officers while in the line of duty. G, all rude or boisterous conduct is prohibited. I, no liquor of any kind will be consumed in the cemetery. J, the throwing of rubbish on any part of the ground. H and K are omitted. That's why I jumped over. Subdivision three, no dog, cat or other household pet. Will be allowed in the cemetery. Unless on a leash secured by the pet owners. Any and all pet droppings will be removed promptly by the pet owner. Subdivision four. Special cases. May arise in which the literal enforcement or interpretation of a rule. May impose on unnecessary hardship. The city reserves the right to make exceptions, suspensions or modifications to any of these rules and regulations. When the judgment of the city such action appears necessary. And such a temporary exception, exceptions, suspension or modification. Shall in no way be construed as affecting the general application of such rules and regulations. Section eight, 607. Unlawful to destroy property is deleted into its entirety. Section nine, 608 Burials and Interments. Shall be amended and deleted language struck out and language in red added subdivision one. No burials or internments of any kind shall be made in said cemetery without prior notification to and permission from the city. Permission shall be granted in this section and all regulations of the city and state pertaining to the cemetery are complied with. Subdivision two, lot owners are granted only the right of interment in their lots. The city of Blackduck reserves the right to refuse to permit the interment of anyone who is not at the time the owner of the lot or a relative of the owner by blood or marriage. Permission and writing and with the seal of the notary public. Of the lot owner must accompany all requests for permits to bury persons not members of the immediate family of the lot owner. Subdivision three. No casket shall be interred in the cemetery unless it is encased in a permanent type burial case or vault. Fiberglass vaults are prohibited. Ashes must be placed in an urn prior to burial, no vault is required for cremation. Subdivision four. Should the lot owner or funeral director fail to neglect to designate the location, the city of Blackduck reserves the right to make the interment in a location designated by the city. The city will not be responsible for any order given by telephone or for any mistake occurring from the want. Of precise proper instructions. As to the particular location within a plot where interment is desired. Subdivision five. The city of Blackduck will not be liable for the interment permit. Nor the identity of the person sought to be interred. Subdivision six. No more than one non cremation burial or interment. And one cremation burial shall be permitted on any one burial plot. Subdivision seven, no more than two cremation burials shall be permitted on any one burial plot. Section ten, 609 Perpetual Care Fund. Shall be amended and deleted language struck out and language in red added subdivision one. The city council should designate a percentage of the sales price of any cemetery lot to be set apart. As a perpetual care fund for the care, maintenance and improvement of the cemetery. The funds shall be kept in this in separate accounts from other city funds as provided by law. The income from the fund can be transferred to the cemetery fund for care, maintenance and improvement of the cemetery. General care assumed by the city shall in no case. Mean the maintenance, repair or replacement of any marker. Or memorial placed or erected upon lots. Nor the doing of special unusual work in the cemetery. Section eleven, 610. General Regulations is deleted its entirety and the language is codified into monuments and markers. Section twelve, 610 Monuments and Markers is amended as follows with deleted language struck out and new language in red. Subdivision one, General Regulations. A, no more than one monument shall be placed upon any one lot. B, all gravesites must have a headstone identifying the interment remains. C, grave markers shall be set even with the ground. D, no lot shall be graded higher than the general level of the cemetery. E, no mound shall be built over any grave. F, no lot enclosures such as fences, hedges, herbs and the like shall be here and after constructed. G, if a second burial is made on any burial plot. It shall be marked by a flesh marker where monuments are permitted in the cemetery, only one monument per burial plot shall be permitted. Subdivision two, location of upright markers. Upright markers cannot be placed in any lots in the following blocks MNOPQRTWXYZ. Subdivision three, location of flat markers. Flat marker. Sorry, flat markers may be placed on any lots and blocks A through Z. Subdivision four, placement of markers, all markers including slab must fit within the property lines. All markers and monuments must be set in cement unless otherwise approved by the city. The cement foundation must be at least four inches thick and have a four inch border around the monument. Subdivision five, maintenance, it shall be the obligation of the owner of any cemetery lot or plot upon which a monument or marker. Flat or upright is located to maintain. And keep such monument in good state of repair at all times. In the event a monument creates a danger to public safety or interferes with maintenance of the cemetery. The city shall A notify the owner in writing. Of the needed repair or maintenance and a date by which such repair and maintenance must be completed. Such notice shall be sent by first class mail to the last known address of the owner according to the official cemetery records maintained by the city. B, if the requested repair or maintenance is not completed by the dates specified, the city may. At discretion, repair, reset or remove such monument. The cost of any such repair, resetting or removable shall removal. Shall be billed to the owner of the cemetery lot or plot. C, whenever the city removes a monument, the city shall provide an alternate identification on the cemetery lot or plot. The cost of such alternate identification shall be included with the city's cost of removal and billed to the owner. Section thirteen is the effective date after its second reading on September ninth. That concludes the reading.
Okay. I'm gonna ask if there's any questions from the public.
I've been due to open one question, what? Unless it changed. Unmarked graves as we speak in the cemetery, how, how was that happen?
There are current. Grave sites that are unmarked and there's interns there?
Last year, I mean, it was a situation where there. For whatever reason, the family, the survivors don't provide a marker. We handle an unmarked grave.
First of all, the city needs to be notified that they're not. So that I can deal with it, but that would be. In my opinion, covered under. The maintenance and the section. Of markers where if there hasn't, if it hasn't been. If it hasn't been marked that the city would market and then bill the owner. Yeah.
That's what I thought. Moving forward, but obviously historical graves are a part.
There's, there could be some out there I'm that we're absolutely unaware of yet, right?
It could be from decades ago.
Yep.
Any other questions? Third time, any other questions from the public? Seeing none. Just you know. Nick. Like to make a motion to adjourn and reopen our and open our. Regular work session.
Yeah, motion close the special hearing and open up our regular agenda. Our regular meeting.
I'll second that. Motion of a second. All in favor? I opposed. Any none? Motion passes, we are. Now, call the order for the. Work session.
Motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Okay, second that. Any discussion? All's in favor? I. Agenda is approved, we are under item three, old business. Our lead service line letter.
We have young men in town today as we speak in Keabletown at three o'clock, we have thirty-one. Recitations that we need to identify yet. They were having. Really good success, I think a little bit later in the day around five o'clock, they've had more success with. Catching people home, so. We're hoping that after the end now, we'll have that list reduced to very few.
And we have the copy of the letter that went on to all of the people we did.
Yeah, there was a bit of a glitch to that though, because the U of M gives us the information. For the address, which is the physical address of the property. But I think what we find is that in Blackduck, the physical address was not many times the mailing address, so. We've had a lot of return letters.
Oh, yeah.
So we've tried to resubmit some of those. Yeah, but we'll see.
But most of the people. Most addresses are not mailing addresses, you have to, no deliveries, so it's a field box. Is there a chance you'd be doing it into Wednesday too?
We do have it scheduled for tomorrow also. We're hoping that we'll get them done, but you know, we'll be back as needed to. And we didn't have, you know, an instance where the family is not in town. So we will make arrangements to come back, the goal is to try and get this done to zero on the customer side.
I don't have a lot to share with the council, I. Requested a quote from the electrical sub that our contractor is using. For the full retro relamping in its entirety, which is beyond the scope of. Gustafson's quote because we have additional funds coming in. And I let Vessler know that he gave me two options basically. One is just to retrofit the forty-five fixtures. For a lower cost, it will still look the same, but there'll be LED bulbs instead. Or to retro it or to replace it with forty-five new fixtures and I told them to move forward with brand new fixtures because those of. We put fluorescent bulbs in there, but that way it'll be brighter and will actually look cleaner because of the new bulbs. And the nice thing is this particular fixture will fit in the same footprint area of the existing lighting fixtures. So we won't have any discoloration on the ceiling that we have to worry about. So they are, the units are actually in back order from what I understand until the end of September, but we have time. This is going to be. Past the scope of what Gustafson's are working on anyway. The other thing I had is the grant contract agreement from the state of Minnesota for the Board of Education Grant. I'll have that. At the council meeting of September eighth for the council to formally approve and sign. And I've included that as well. I think there's two additional policies that I have to include with this, I'm still working on those.
To read all that. Twenty-three pages, yes. But. Moving back to the light fixtures, absolutely the right decision, don't spend money trying to retrofit. Thirty-year-old shells of things that are outdated, because thirty years from now you have a sixty-year-old shell and it's a crappy. Crappy deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Technical term, right?
Yeah.
Get new light fixtures, get them to stay there and then it'll be.
Yeah.
Less.
Less of a headache letter.
Less outdated thirty years.
Yes, exactly.
We have the funds, obviously.
Yes, yes. Exactly. And like I told Tony, it's past the scope of his original project anyway, and that's why I'm bringing the quote to the board just to review, but. I didn't feel as though that the cost was so exorbitant, but I'd have to go out and find other quotes. Vessler's been pretty good handling everything over there so far.
Any other? Questions on this? I'll, like I said, I'll read it. For it.
Okay.
We're gonna have to get the girl's sunglasses for him now?
I don't know. It'll be dark anyway by the time it's up, I mean. Sun's gonna go down earlier, it'll lead him in.
You said they're, they're gonna be able to have them in September or that's when?
It was late September that they're back ordered too, so I wouldn't expect installation before October.
Okay.
Yeah.
Realistic.
Yeah.
Please.
So I don't know if Mike and Don have anything on the. On the lion's duck, but I did meet with some partners from the fire department regarding. The corner of the historic duck and I think we have a really good. Idea of what the fire department wants to do, the corner, we collaborated with some ideas on how to. Protect the statue itself. Incorporate the flag pole that they're going to relocate from the Choice Therapy property and bring the bell. Back onto that corner as well. So it sounds like we've got some really great ideas about how to make that corner work for both. What we've been working on with the statue and what the fire department does. But we've got some plans to write up and some ideas to actually get quotes for before we can really bring. The full plan. For the board to actually look at, but the fire relief sounded like they were really happy with the collaboration, so. Yeah. Oh my, yes, yeah, I mean, I. I think there was a concern that, you know, ideas would be too. Far to the extreme, but honestly, I, I think their ideas are fabulous, I figured they probably would be and they want to do what they can to make sure the duck is protected. We've even been discussing about. Re-situating the statue offset a little bit instead of the center so that when the. Flagpole and the bell are put into place where they want it, that you could see both of them. Instead of one hiding behind the other, so we're kind of playing with some of those ideas if it's even possible. But there are some historic. Thought processes about how that statue is even mounted to its base that we need to dig into. Before we jump into. Going to that level.
Oh, it's mounted to the base.
Yeah.
Because that concrete was splitting inside the fiberglass, so if you start moving it, it might.
It might go? Oh, that's good to know. Um, I do. Have some disappointing news when I was out there last Thursday with the fire relief partners. The backside of your new patch is already cracking. And there's already water coming out of the base that the statue is on, so I'm a little sad to see that.
Another cold object.
I don't know.
The concrete inside was living.
Yeah. So I don't know if. The insides are forcing the fiberglass to come apart. But it's straight down the middle of your patch.
Right down.
Yeah. Walk that way on your way home tonight. But I think it could get patched again, it's just.
Is it on the? Just the black part or?
Yes.
So it would be hard to.
No. You can clearly see your patch. Behind the paint. But I think that was the only place I saw it crack. All the more reason to get. Our, our school involved and, and put, you know, something protecting it. Just as long as it doesn't block the flagpole and the bell, that's what we want to do.
I think any plans to move that would be ill advised. Should the, she wanna?
Crack it more?
Have a problem. Wouldn't even crack it more, I'm afraid it would be on multiple pieces on the ground.
I'll share that with folks I'm working with.
All right. New business.
I will segue to which one of you is Mike. Hi, Mike. Good, nice to see you. We have some folks here that wanted to. Good, nice to see you. Um we have some folks here that wanted to uh feel out the board regarding the shade store properties, so I you guys can have the floor, do whatever you need to. All I presented to them was uh a mapping of where the shade store is and refresh their memory on our ordinance we passed.
Yeah, thank you very much.
What do you need?
I'm just seeing if I can.
Unify?
I can get this up on the TV.
Yeah.
Just got a couple photos of other projects that we've done.
Yeah, that's all right.
Nice to meet you.
So if it doesn't work, I'll just just speak to it.
Yeah, this is Alan Bonset, who would be the head of one of the operating companies. And so I'm really the real estate kind of focused person. So what we are looking at doing is turning the shade store into three uh operating companies that would bring jobs for the council and for the town um to this area. So it would be roughly, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty jobs in the end, uh if we get this thing fully up and running. It would include a manufacturing and then about forty five thousand feet of cultivation space um in the whole campus. So we would try and set it in a way that would be viable and kind of long term, but I'm gonna let Alan speak to this, because this is really his his go to. I'm more the real estate nut fool type of person.
So Mike and I met about twelve or thirteen years ago. My name's Alan Bonset. Um we met in Colorado. I was a real estate professional and so was Mike, and downturn hit oh seven, oh eight. And a few years later, got into uh the emerging cannabis market there. And um we took two different buildings in the city and retrofitted those industrial buildings into high end cultivation centers to uh provide cannabis for the uh dispensaries in in the in Colorado area. Uh since then, I've worked in Washington, Oregon, California, Michigan, Illinois, um and now Minnesota. So uh here we are. Thank you guys for having us tonight. Um just kind of go through a little bit. I had a presentation, but I'll just kind of read it out to you guys if we can. If anybody's interested in it, I can email you afterwards. Um so um it's for to understand that we uh we were, I represent a company called Novo Inc. And we represent several uh social equity applicants in the state of Minnesota, helping um us and them to stand up three Mezzo licenses, which are um three dispensaries, uh cultivation, extraction uh per license. So we have nine retail stores under our umbrella, uh several stores in the city. And what we're proposing is to use this facility here in Black Duck to um uh provide uh not just flour for the businesses, but also other types of manufactured cannabis products. So in this state right now, uh the projection is from about five hundred and fifty million and twenty five to one point five billion in twenty in two thousand and twenty nine. So uh it's about a billion dollars that's gonna uh increase over the next uh four years, five years here in in Minnesota. So um you know, lots of communities are trying to take advantage of that. Uh we used to call it the green rush. Uh but it's uh not always a get rich quick scheme, so I wanna be real real clear on that with you guys today. We really feel like it's very important to do things the right way. Uh the property um here at two seventy two um Summit Avenue, that's the uh that's what we're looking to 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 purchase and really need to to gather the support of uh the council to be able to make that happen. Uh Nobos had a very successful track record working with communities, communities consistently benefited from cannabis industry through property development, job creation, tax revenue, generation and community engagement. Uh when we get these projects started, um there's a lot of building that goes on for the first uh twelve months or so. And so we try to employ people within the the community, obviously. Uh it's very important to us, so. That's something that that will be on the table. A little bit about our uh company. Uh we're, we call it a vertically integrated cannabis uh operator, which means that we cultivate, we process, and we have retail stores. Right now, we have about ten stores in Michigan, Colorado, Illinois, um and soon to be uh Minnesota, which will have ten or more stores as we get moving. Annual revenue in excess of thirty million. Um at our core, we're growers and uh vertical integration provides us advantage in the market. And what does vertical integration mean? That means that we uh grow our product and then we manufacture our product, and then we dispense our product in our stores. Which the reason that we do that is because these markets get very saturated uh quickly. And if we're not, uh if we don't have our own supply, if we don't have our own outlets, then eventually we just aren't profitable, so. Um and Michigan's a very tough state where we have the bulk of our business and prices are very low there, but we're still able to generate uh revenue and state flow to just due to the vertical integration piece. What also means that uh that we're growers at heart. It also means that we we own all our technology within the facilities. These are very sophisticated facilities, so we have our own LED light that we manufacture. We will be manufacturing here in uh Minnesota, as well as uh all the ancillary hardware that goes into the building, fermentation machines, racking systems, uh control systems, atmospheric control systems, as well as HVAC and and so on and so forth. So um we do all that because we got started really early in in this industry and we just found that nobody else really did it. So we started pooling things together and and doing it our way. And uh we also do a lot of consulting for other companies around the country and even in Europe. But our mission is to improve lives and communities by providing consumers in the medical community to access to clean, sustainable uh produce cannabis products of the highest quality. So one thing about our industry is we're the most regulated industry there is. Every bit of our product is tested and retested and um and it, you know, it it's pest, there's no pesticides in it. Um so it it's uh, you know, quality and and that's really what we focus on. Our consumer uh focus, constant innovation and community engagement. You know, talk a little bit about where we are in Michigan and what we did there in a second. Just a little bit about our history. Um I'm the founder. Um I founded Novo in two thousand and nineteen. Mike and I have been working together since I think two thousand and twelve. Uh this guy was crazy enough to to back me originally uh when I got started, so uh really excited to be here with him now and tend to for us to try to get this project going here. Um you know, we've we've been through a lot. We we were early on in the industry and um so I'm sure that we can can make this work in this in this community. Um so in two thousand and nineteen, uh Nova was kind of a, it was uh was part of our, what I call it, was the building side of our original business back before we couldn't have banking and all these things. And and originally, um we I sold our business that we started together. Again, he was the real estate and I I was the uh the operator. Uh but then Nova became its own company and and uh in in two thousand and twenty one, we opened three stores in Michigan. Uh now we have seven there. Uh in twenty two, we became the fastest growing company in Colorado. Um so that was that was exciting. And then in twenty three, uh we expanded it to Illinois, uh additional retail stores in Michigan, um as well as as in 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 twenty four and twenty five as well. We just expanded a few a few stores and another cultivation in Colorado. Um so I do want to talk a little bit about our case study tonight, which was it's Ben Harbor, Michigan. Um two thousand and nineteen to twenty, uh Ben Harbor was very, very much suffering from D and all the industries basically went away there. A lot of car parts were manufactured there and um it's a very suppressed ec- economic area.
They lost a lot of jobs, unfortunately.
A lot of jobs. The town was like a ghost town and we could uh buy properties for like really uh not next to nothing. High poverty poverty rate, persistent unemployment and the infrastructure problems. Um cannabis definitely changed that area in a positive way. And the recreational cannabis has been legalized in Michigan um since two thousand and nineteen. Um Nova has been awarded license in Michigan, and we were looking to expand our business back then. And Ben Harbor offered an economic zone development opportunities for our cultivation site and access to downtown retail. What that means is we took an old foundry that was off the tax um tax roll, however you say it, for about eight years. And we bought that and then built it into a state of the art uh cannabis facility, which now employs about fifty people and is still vibrant and successful to to this day. And what else can I say here? We launched in twenty one there, our our full property. We built our facility. It was about six point five million in 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 cost. And and part of being in that community was very important uh for our community partnerships. Um all types of things that we've done there from uh taking care of the parks each uh year to um tons of of job creation, as I said, lots of tax dollars, um lo- lots of extended economic uh impact around the area, because our our uh called our base mix, where we cultivate our product, um that gets sold out to our our retail stores and that creates even even further jobs. Uh we expect this opportunity to create about a hundred and fifty jobs roughly, um just depending on, you know, how how things go. We've been very active in uh involvement in the Downtown Development Authority, ongoing uh contributor to the Art District, um annual community giving of the Noble Cares Organization. So we have a Noble Cares organization that we founded. When we got there, everybody wanted us to invest in their um and 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 you know, in their uh whatever they were doing for their uh their, you know, community. And and we started our own program because we just felt like we kept.
So it's, pardon me for sure. So so like the giving back part, that kind of sparked me a little bit. I was like, what are you?
What, well.
I mean, like the baseball teams and uh, you know, the little leagues and.
You gotta be careful with that, you know, because it's cannabis.
You can't put it on the back of their shirts.
Yeah, that's not, you know, I I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, well, there's lots of things. I mean, Humane Society was a big one that was happy to to take our money. We do also, uh we go to a lot of the local farmers markets and we try to educate people on the uh medical use of cannabis. And um we really like to be translator of cannabis and what it really means. Um we strongly believe that cannabis is much healthier than alcohol. Um you know, a lot of the young people uh that we've seen in Michigan don't, a lot of people don't drink alcohol as much as they used to. And they um they uh they use cannabis and we feel like that's a safer thing, uh safer drug, if you wanna call it that. Um Breast Cancer Foundation, uh we had a veterans project, uh outreach center, and then just employees active in the community. So those are some of the things that we use. So we can't really touch the the kids.
Yeah, right.
Side of things, but anything other than that, we we, you know, we we try to help and we can't give donations, you know, kind of on the side. We also uh, there's a lot of pro athletes in that area and we've we've given a lot of money to their foundations. Um and can kind of do it through 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 those types of, you know, second tier donations, if you will. So it's something that's really important. I think we built a really good uh community base there because of that. You know, people know that we give back to the community. And it seems sensitive, but um really in the end, you'd be amazed how quickly people just, it just becomes part of of the community and and it's just, it's not something that's really any in anyone's face or anything. It just becomes a very normal, normal thing, you know, uh at least that's what we've seen. And you know, I always started, when I got in this business, I told my mom, she was like, oh, please don't. And then, you know, now she, you know, she used our our uh sleep gummies to uh get off of Ambien, which I know is, you know, not a safe drug that the pharmaceutical companies um, you know, produce. And and the the gummies are, help her sleep. She's in her eighties and um so that, you know, it does change. Reception changes pr- pretty quickly.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thanks, Steve.
So when you said what what products, you said we would be producing there. And so you're like the you grow it and then the flour, but then you said you manufacture other things.
Yeah.
What are the products?
So we manufacture, we have a mood uh gummy line, which is like uh, which is different types of gummies. There are different responses, sleep, um it's it's probably the biggest one. Um and we produce uh vape pens, uh we produce uh what else, uh like chocolates. Um we produce pre-rolls, we produce um what else? Distillate, just bulk uh distillate.
And we'll sell to other people so they can build their products around it.
Like.
So we'll sell, we'll sell them the oil.
Oils, okay, that's 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 what I was, that was my next question.
Actually, we're just taking the flour and reducing it to a uh to oil, a ro- uh sometimes a rosin base or a CO two oil. And then we use that oil to put in different different products.
Right.
Gummies or vape pens or uh drinks. Drinks, we got a lot, there's drinks.
Drink, that's what I was gonna ask you. So I I'm the manager of liquor operations for the city. So we do have lines of THC and gummies that we sell there. Are you guys looking to do retail here too, or is this just manufacturing?
You know, I mean, mainly just manufacturing here. Um I hadn't really thought too much of retail. It is something that we would consider though, because um a lot of, we'll have a hundred and fifty employees and a lot of those employees will purchase products. And so it would be nice if we had a store close by. Uh but we had, nothing is in the plans for that as of as of now.
So do you, do you you distribute or sell your product to any other retail outlets, or are you only yours?
Yes, we do actually. And one other thing that to mention is that we we white label man- our contract manufacturer for other brands. So we have several national brands that will be bringing here with us to manufacture that isn't our brand. And then we have multiple brands as well. And we'll have a new Minnesota brand as well that's specific to to state.
But the main, the main goal of this facility is to be a wholesaler.
Right.
And that's, that's the main goal uh for us in this in this township. I think that's what can bring a very good jobs. Not a lot of uh impact, I would say, outside of that, because it's going to be very much in the campus.
Right.
I mean, it's, we've done it before. We're, you know, it it's pretty indescriptible. We don't really want people to know what's in the building. So we're not, we're not advertising a lot of things on the outside of these buildings. We're pretty much, you'll see nothing on the outside of the building.
Right.
We've done this enough times and we don't really want anyone to see. Yeah, probably, we'll probably see the shade store. I mean, I left them old, old signs all the time, because we didn't really need, we don't want to advertise it. It doesn't matter to us. Like that, that's not our goal.
And then you would get packaging and shipping that all come out of there.
And it would all come out of box trucks. That would be indescript box trucks. We're, we're not trying to be like a major, you know, billboard sign to this, to this place.
Right.
Yeah, in Michigan, we still have the recycling center at the front of our uh, the front of our driveway, our our that goes back, you know, a little ways.
Right.
Um you know, we never had any issues in Michigan with uh with any theft at all, and it's a very kind of rough area.
Right.
Um not saying that it can't happen, you know, early on in Colorado, we had one or two issues very early on. And since then, we haven't really seen much. All the facilities are fully cambered, you know?
Yeah.
And those are monitored full time and facility this size, we would have a full time, you know, security person there all the time just to be safe.
Well, I mean, whether you put a sign on it or not, it's a pretty small town.
Oh, we know, we know you're no, but I mean, again, we just don't try to.
No, but I understand.
Space, you know.
No, and that's, and that's, yeah, that's very smart, I guess.
The facilities are, have to understand, everything has has a vaults, so all the product has to be stored in in vaults uh that are highly secure with, the walls have to be built out of mesh and the doors have to be have huge magnets on them. And and so it's not easy to to just break in one of one of these facilities. And one other, one other thing I'd mention too is that the way that the facility looks on the outside is not the way that it looks on the inside. It's very scientific what we do, and we basically will be, we will be building rooms within rooms. And there's a ton of infrastructure that goes in there between HVAC and dehumanification and
Lighting.
benching and benching and lighting and lots of, just lots of, very expensive to to build.
Lots of rooms and rooms and rooms.
That's, that's what we, that's what we've seen. So I think, I think the, one of the points to make, and this is one, one of the ones that's probably most salient is we think it's gonna be on top of buying the building. It's gonna be another four to six million dollars of improvements. So that's pretty significant money that we're willing to bring in.
Right.
On top of, those are the construction jobs and then the permanent jobs.
Right.
And what we really try to do is be a viable, long term solution.
Right.
Because we've seen Colorado collapse, we've seen Michigan collapse, we've seen California collapse, Washington, Oregon, you name them, they commoditize. And we, and so we wanna build this that we can produce at a low enough price per pound by using our technology, by using our our know-how of how to build these out to make them very efficient. It's counting the number of steps that people have to take between moving from one place to the other. It is manufacturing. This is full on manufacturing. And my, my family has done manufacturing for years and years and years. So this is where my grandfather used to design pumps and pneumatic valves, gears for other people's factories. That was what his business was. My other family, we do public restrooms. We build all the public restrooms and prefab them and ship on trucks all around the country. So that's what my mom and my stepdad do.
Okay.
And so we have a big factory in. And so we have a big factory in Reno that we literally prefab these buildings and there'll be one to eight-piece buildings and we'll ship them. And then drop them off sites in different counties, so this is, this is where we've taken so our. Kind of family background and, and our other, you know, kind of history and experience that we've had before, and we want to make this into like true manufacturing. It's not just, you know, growing cannabis, it is literally manufacturing it at a very low cost per pound at a high level.
Right.
So you had mentioned that you're expecting a hundred and fifty jobs, is that a hundred and fifty jobs locally, or is that. Throughout the process of your business from locally here inside town all the way out to your retail?
I think, um, I can answer that.
I'm sorry, and you're probably still working on your. We're just blasting you with questions.
We'd rather answer questions, that's what matters to us, like.
Yeah, I, we feel like it should, it should be about a hundred and fifty jobs just here.
Just locally.
You know, maybe a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty, it's gonna take a little while to get up to that.
Okay.
Eventually, there, you know, we may lose a few of those jo- those jobs, not all of those, but when you're, you know, like. Anytime you're going in somewhere, you're gonna hire more people.
Correct.
And then you're gonna reduce it down as time goes on, you know, just to be realistic, uh, we. We need fewer jobs so that we, because it's a, it's a low market, it becomes a very low margin business, so. Um, but we're looking at, at about a hundred and fifty jobs, you know, realistically, um, here and then. Probably, we were talking about, probably about fifteen to twenty per store, uh, and we'll have about at least ten stores. Um, so that's kind of, that's kind of the, the number, um, you know, we're. The revenue, uh, that we expect to generate, you know, the top line revenue, uh, we feel like conservatively is about sixty million.
Okay.
It'll take a solid two years to get to that, that number will reduce, it won't stay there, like, you know, it'll, as the market gets. Uh, more saturated, that number will come down, hopefully we can stay around that sixty million long, long term. Um, I s- I've said this before, uh, wouldn't probably expect more than twenty million the first twelve months because. Takes a long time to get everything up, up ramped up and so, um, you know, one of the things that. Uh, we did in Ben Harbor, Michigan was, um, we were very, we're very transparent, so I don't want to over promise, so, um. We've been really good at trying to, at, at hitting our numbers, you know, you can, looks good on paper, but then the actual physical part of getting the work done is, is pretty significant.
And all of this is regulated by OCM, so we have a lot of rules and regulations for the construction of this, how to, how to actually build it out, what's allowed per OCM. And we're also providing them with things that we think are actually beneficial, because we've seen it in other places and I think hopefully. It's a learning process where we go, hey.
That was one of my questions, what, what, what kind of varied regulations are you finding from the Office of Cannabis Management in Minnesota versus like Michigan and Colorado? States that you have gone through, because they're, they're kind of, you know. Racing and building the car at the same time at the state.
Every, every state messes it up in a different way.
Boy, that's, that's ensuring.
I, it's just, you know, the truth, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I think. The testing of the product is what's so important, right? I mean, making something that people are consuming, that's pretty regulated. Um, you know, it, the, the challenges are more based on like structures of the business.
Got it.
You know, if that makes sense.
Sure.
And, um, and there's, you know, there's not a lot of money for cannabis operators now, this industry has kind of been. Um, suffering in the last several years all around the country.
Right.
Some states are better than others, I like to say, we like to, to find the toughest states and trying to make it work there.
Hopefully not this one.
Um, we're hoping.
I didn't want to come back to that.
But it, we're, you know, we, we go into it with that expectation, you know, that it's gonna. Um, and that's why our, where our technology becomes really important in our, our process, we use everything in, uh, for tissue culture, so. Uh, we keep all our strains in tissue culture, which helps us, um, produce more, um.
So essentially, it's just a, it's, it's DNA, so we, we keep the DNA of it so that when you're, when you're taking traditionally, you're taking leaves off of. Other plants and that can degrade the, the DNA over time, and so you end up getting really bad product and you have to constantly turn it, but when you have tissue culture. It allows you to just replicate the DNA exactly.
Okay.
And so it makes a higher quality product that's consistent, so when you go and get that, it gets you the same thing every time. So people can get comfortable and get used to being given the same thing.
Sure.
And one of the jo- the job, um, scenarios just really has, uh, to answer your question, a lot of it has to do with. How large our manufacturing, this part of this business will be, and that's, it's always, um, it's easier for us to say, well, it's gonna. We have this much square feet of canopy, that we're gonna need this many employees, but how fast and, um. Fast we can build the, uh, the manufacturing will make a big difference on how we charge for it. But it's really important to have that aspect so that we're not a kind of a one-trick pony with just one product or two products to sell the market. That allows us to be more viable.
And if, and if we're able to move quickly with, with supportive and township and, and. And community, then we're able to actually get our brand out and that brand, then it becomes a stronger brand throughout the state. And that's a big piece for us as well, is why we're trying to find a community that can partner with us and help us get this done. So that we can then have these viable jobs for a much longer period of time, that's, that's a big part for us, so, you know, when people can move quickly or can. You know, go through these things, we're happy to answer any questions, but it really helps us to build a more viable business.
Right.
So, uh, partnership, you know, with, with Black Duck is what we're kind of looking for today, um, partnership in establishing a safe. And significant and successful integrated cannabis business in this region, um, I know that, you know, this part of. Of the state could use jobs and that's what we're here to create and, um. Um, you know, the two seventy-two Summit Avenue, we feel like is a building that, that can work, work for us.
Okay.
Um, assistance and, and accessing economic opportunity zone incentives and. Um, accelerate time to benefits for community in Novo is, is one of the things that, you know, we're, we're looking for and just open and honest communication. You know, we don't really want to go anywhere where, um, and be a part of where we're, where we're not wanted, so. Uh, we really want to be a good steward of the community and, and as Mike said, you know, build something that is sustainable.
Right.
Um, other than that, uh, thank you guys so much for the time, I'm, I'm happy to take any more questions, I'm sure there's maybe a couple more.
So obviously, one of my, one of my concerns is the ordinance that was already set has a setback to. Daycare slash schools, so the, um, Bycat Head Start that's located within. Um, that property distance is a, um, is a no-go, the way our ordinance is set. Um, Mike and I had this conversation over the phone on Thursday, um, I don't know where that sits. But then my other concern was I put you in contact with Bell Trami County, because they're the ones that are gonna do the licensing for our entity.
Right.
Did you hear anything back from Brent?
Uh, I haven't, I, I left him a message, so I'm waiting to hear from him, it sounds like people are taking a lot of vacations, because it's the nicest part of the year. So I totally agree and I, I appreciate that, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Get out to the lake.
Absolutely.
And so hopefully I'll, I'll be able to hear back, I've been talking to other EDCs, I've been talking to some other economic development committees. I've been trying to figure out, you know, what else is going on here, how the power, you know, connecting with different people that I can, so I'm, I'm just trying to go and. And get a bigger picture and go, okay, what, what would help us get this moving along, how can I help the community, what, what answers need to be answered? And how can we keep moving this, and that's what is important for me, that's just, I've been, I've been in real estate development for the last twenty-two years, so I've. I've built actually a high-rise apartment deal in Minneapolis, uh, in two thousand and fourteen with my last company. I ran a Mexico industrial fund, I mean, I've been all over the world for my last company, where I kind of went out on my own. And started doing, uh, more projects like this that are more interesting to me. So that's, that's where I've kind of come from, and so I'm trying to do, use my, my development experience and go, okay, how do I, how do I help us get this, what do you need to know? And what can I go run down and chase down and start figuring out so we can make something work, and I think that's really important for us.
So I think they.
What would be an approximate cost differential between retrofitting a building and. Just starting from scratch and building a facility as standards.
I, I, that's a really good question, I mean, it's definitely, um. Quite a bit more expensive for this, for something a little bit smaller, actually, uh, it would be. You know, probably seven billion or so, seven and a half million just to build it from scratch.
Good.
Um, we've done that and I would prefer to do that, no question, but. Uh, time to market is, is, is really important and this, this building is, is affordable and that, you know, that's part of our. That's part of why we like it, um, time to, you know, again, time to market's everything. A couple of things that are really important to us, I mean, we talked about having enough power, is something that's really important to us, making sure that we can. Find enough employees that, that want the job, you know, want the jobs, that's, I think it's very important to us.
Are you looking at any other locations in the state of Minnesota besides Black Duck?
We are, yep, we are, we've, this, uh, we've, we've, we got a couple of other locations that we've looked at. Um, so far and we may, there's a chance we may do two of these, Mike doesn't like me to say that, but, uh.
Well, don't you have three licenses?
We have three licenses, but, uh, but we've, a lot of other people that want us to work with them and so there's some op- there's some opportunities to, to, to. Partner up with some other groups and, um, then this will be between the two of us, I think, the tenth or eleventh bill, large bill that we've done and. I'll tell you one thing, we're still here, so, uh.
So far.
We never.
Still friends?
Yeah, still friends. And we still, uh, we still haven't, you know, we haven't retired yet, so, so there's a lot of work, there's a lot of work ahead of us, um. But it's something we, you know, I really love to do it, you know, on a personal basis, it's not, um, not, it's kind of, it's really is a love of. What a, what is that, labor of love, I guess is the word I'm trying to say, and then, um, so, you know, the more that we can build, the, the better, you know, I mean.
You ever had to close any of your locations because they didn't go through?
One, one dispensary I had to close in Michigan.
But it was a dispensary, not a manufacturing.
Not a manufacturing, I'm proud to say that the first one that we started in Colorado, uh, is still viable and successful today and. But I'll also, you know, uh, tell you that a lot of them aren't, a lot of them have gone out of business.
Hmm.
Um, you know, building them correct is, is really the, the key. Uh, we prefer, you know, to answer your, your question, sir, we prefer to build a, like a pharmaceutical grade. GMP facility, that's what, that's what we have in Colorado, if that was, that was our choi- that was our choice, but financially it's just not really viable right now and. Being that the market is early, um, um, if this building is just a better, better fit.
And, and we would potentially do it in, in sections so we can get a go-up going faster, so that's one of the pieces to it is that the large white. Building the back part, uh, because it's very disjointed, that one's a very easy one for us to, to go and build out quickly and put a layout that works and then that can be a separate tenant. And that, so that can get going, and so it allows us, this, this project in particular allows us to kind of step it in. And hopefully that is something that we can work with, the engineering or the city staff, I'm not sure who does your construction review, to do these kind of, um. Either a DCO or a CEO, I know, I know you guys don't have much staff, but like, I know you have third parties, but maybe I talk to a third party about it, but. You know, that's what I've, we've been able to do before, is, is try and get those, you know, working and then sprinkled and, and then we can kind of make it work faster that way.
So one thing I would, I would say is that, what we were learning from these other communities that, and, you know, the rules are going to change.
Mm-hmm.
Question, so, uh, you know, that, that's just like given, always is, but. I feel, I, what my understanding is, is that if the city doesn't, um, adapt, uh, uh, put on its own ordinance, then it. It falls over to the, um, to the county.
To the county.
Right, so that really means that, you know, you can write your own ordinance on, on how you think it, you know. Uh, it should, it should be.
Cultivation.
You know.
Right.
And the ordinance we did was for a dispensary, not cultivation.
Yeah, it didn't speak much of it.
It's not like you're, yeah, so it's gonna be two totally different entities.
And even says in there, minimal buffer requirements shall be met for all businesses. But it also says, minimum buffer requirements may be reduced with the full support at a city council meeting in the city of Black Duck, citing a specific business application. Unacceptable buffer distance.
Have you had any traction on the dispensary?
Not yet, you're actually the first solid, um, business model that's come to the city looking and has had interest. And like I said to you on Thursday, I don't even know what's been approved, if any, in Bell Trami County since January one, so. Um, I haven't seen anything pop up in Bemidji, I haven't heard any of, anything else popping up, um. So I don't know if they've even approved any licenses to date of this year.
Like you say, you said it right there, you know, you're building the, uh, they're building the, the plane.
Building the car and racing at the same time, yeah.
I s- I say you're packing the parachute on the way down.
Pretty much, yeah.
So. That's how I say it.
Yep.
Wrong? Uh, so where would you anticipate the product you, you would manufacture here being sold? What, what geographics?
In, in, in Michigan, we're completely vertically integrated, so we, which means that we sell everything at our own store.
Hmm.
So that's kind of our.
Sell outside of the store though?
We used to, but we don't anymore.
Okay.
I, I'd like, we want to here to sell outside of the store to other, uh, dispensaries, because it just helps us have a.
Brand.
Your brand, but also, it also just helps our comp- our, kind of spreads to the risk factor. Uh, you know, I, I, I now I do analogy, like we're real estate guys and, but it's like having an apartment complex versus one big box store, right? One goes, you lose one tenant in your one store and you don't have any rent and, um, so if you have other, you know, multiple distribution points and. Uh, then it just protects the business and, and as I said earlier, uh, we're also trying to contract manufacture for some other brands. And all those will be so- sold all over the state to different dispensaries.
Yeah, our goal is to sell all over the state, to answer your question.
Within Minnesota though.
Yes, yeah, within this state.
So this, you don't anticipate this store, many, this facility manufacturing for other states, interstate shipments?
Not, not right now, uh, state products can't cross state lines.
Yeah, I didn't think OCM even had that in their model, yeah.
Reason we're not, we're, we're until, and then if the federal rules change and all of a sudden we're allowed to do that.
No.
And we will absolutely look at any way we can.
Class one.
We can, you know, create more viable business.
Okay.
So it's, we're overdue, but it's not acceptable to us right now, it's just not a.
So at this point, it's, you're looking solely at Minnesota, within the state boundaries unless the federal law changes.
Correct.
Yes.
And, and the state law changes, because the federal law could change and the state can still say, hey, we want product from outside of our state.
You could make it more restrictive.
And you would, did I hear you say you would plan on distributing just to retail establishments that you own? Or would it be to other ownerships?
Both, it'll be both, I'm saying in Michigan, we only, we only supplies our, our own store, but this project will be about four times bigger than. What we done, what we've done in Michigan and, I don't know, we'll only have a few more stores. Uh, so we will, we will have to sell it to other locations.
So. I was sorry. So it would be at your, your owned retail establishments as well as other.
Yes.
Owned retail establishments and what is the number of retail establishments in Minnesota you would plan on owning?
Well, right now we have about eleven, I think, within our network. Cause we, we, we don't own them all, like with sometimes, some of them we manage with ma- management service agreements, things like that, so right now we're at eleven. Um, we haven't found all those locations, I think we're at about seven or eight, pretty solid, and we've got four down in the city. Um, and then, oh, uh, just, and just a couple other, a couple other ones around, uh, one on the, uh, over on the South Dakota border. Oh, gosh, I'm trying to think of. St. Cloud.
Hmm.
So we're, we're trying to pick good locations so that we can make sure that we build a client base that is, is more of a state-based.
Are these currently operating retail locations?
No, they're not.
They're, they're all in the planning stages?
That's right.
And you, did I hear you say you have eight licenses, retail licenses?
We have, uh, nine within our, our direct network and then.
In, in Minnesota?
In Minnesota, and then we've got another two that are, uh, that are coming on board as management.
So, so you would be operating up to nine at this point?
Yes. The, the prob- problem now is there's no product, like, uh, four of the stores we have.
Trying to get product.
So none are operating as retail business.
There's, there's almost no product available right now, so everyone's trying to figure out how to, this is the chicken and the egg. So they're in a stand-up dispensary and there's gonna be no product for people unless they can get it from either the nations.
Hmm.
Um, or.
My question is then, how fast can we change this ordinance?
We, we can get this moving, so, I mean, we, we can move fast, that's why I'm going and, you know, I've, I've got. The electoral, local electoral subcontractor coming out to meet me tomorrow, I have a whole bunch of other contractors, the power company, I've. I've already started going down this path because I wanted to do it in parallel to us having this meeting with the township, obviously. We want to make sure that people are on board and as long as we keep getting the green flags, I keep pushing and doing my development thing.
I'm on board. Oh, question for you.
Yes.
Sure. Do you guys water irrigate plants?
We have a irrigation machine that do that for us, you know.
Do you have any idea on the water consumption, the size of this operation would use on a daily or monthly basis?
Oh, man, it was a question that I had the, I, I, I remembered the other day and I, I forgot, I can find out.
You just ballpark it for me and I'm just, just curious.
Yeah.
I'm going down so much, getting that by the lungs, it's a drip irrigation system. I've been waiting down so much, getting that by the long, it's a drip irrigation system, so we use a rock or a, a block. So essentially the drip goes directly into the block with the nutrients, and so it's a concentrated nutrients, the water is ac- actually not a ton of, uh, it's not as heavy of a water use. We're not flooding a cocoa pot like you would see with like these old traditional growers.
Sure.
They use a big cocoa pot like this big and then they fill it with water, we're, we're literally have a block about this big, we put a couple drips. Of directs like nutrients off of it.
Like per day and it's a couple drips of water?
Well, it's more than a couple drips in a day, but we have, we have a couple thousand plants.
I'll, I'll have the answer in a couple minutes.
Sorry, that's, that's the one thing, we're trying to, we're trying to dial in how many plants we have, we'll have, you know, we know the canopy amount, but we don't know exactly. How many plants we're gonna put in that canopy based on what we have.
You know, one of the issues that, that, uh, you know, there's the, there's water, which I think that, we, probably plenty of water around here, I would think, uh.
Yeah, how is the water situation here?
We've got water.
Okay, I see lots of lakes, I figure that the water deal is probably like five feet below the ground.
So there's, there's plenty of water around, it's just what we're set up for, what we're licensed through the state for, I mean, I can't imagine you guys are using that term.
No.
Probably running a cooling tower, we'll be running a VFR mini split system, which, so we don't even have to run like a two hundred ton cooling tower, which would take thousands of gallons.
So, you, you mentioned that you, when you add the water, you add the nutrients, does that, does any of this water come out?
Uh, that was.
Sewer?
No, no, so that's a very, that was the, where I was gonna go with this, that's the one kind of thing that people are concerned about, right? Is make sure you have a wastewater management plan, ours is all, uh, drained away, so it all, it all gets recirculated back through. It's all on benches, it gets dripped in the drip line, anything else gets sent back through filter system, so. Uh, but that is one issue that the state's been struggling with, you know, trying to figure out how that works, but, um. It, it's pretty simple because we, we recirculate the water.
Okay.
Just as one other part of this is, though, the LED lighting company that, that Alan owns and controls. He's actually selling these LED lights to other cultivators and we will be storing and potentially building our, do final manufacturing at this space. Uh, if we have space for it, and so that'll be then another opportunity for us to be able to sell LED lighting and benching. And some of these different systems that we use to other people.
Right.
Yeah, it's very, it's very important to us, uh, that, because, um, we, if we manufacture the light here, then there's extra rebates. Or, um, manufacturing cost and that, right now, be, there's, because of the tariffs and whatnot in China, there's lots of supply chain issues. Um, so a lot of, it's gonna be slow roll trying to get, um, lights under canopy or can, plants under lights here. Just because there's just not a lot of, of equipment, um, but we want to manufacture those lights here, so that's what we did in Michigan. Uh, what that does is just gives us an extra credit so that we can actually compete with the Chi- uh, with the Chinese lights.
And we actually have available lights, so that's one of the things we do have, is that we already have a stockpile of lights because of the lighting company that allows us to. Again, move faster and that's, again, what we're trying to do is move quickly so that we can establish our brand in this, in the state. Any other thoughts, Nick?
What's kind of your guys' base salary somewhere in there?
It's a good question, I mean, it, it's definitely over minimum wage, uh, for the low, for the lowest, um, I know. And Ben Harbor, I can't remember, we had a lot of jobs over fifty thousand dollars. It, you know, it, we gotta be careful because prices, prices go, go down, but, uh, and, and the dispensaries. Uh, will tell you that they get paid really well for tips, um. I, you know, one of my favorite parts of, about what we did in Michigan was there were so many of our employees that, you know, got out of. Living with their parents or, uh, their kids had, you know, had, were sharing a room, five or six of them, so. Um, uh, it's a funny little story, but like for your mental health, you need a gratitude mantra, some of it sounds weird. My gratitude mantra is when one of my employees, you know, come to me and they're, and they're so happy that they, they got their kids in a home. You know, so I will tell you that we, you know, we got a lot, a lot of people that got, like, were able to buy their own homes, you know, they never could have had, had that happen. Um, you know, a lot of our employees, we train up, I mean, it's not, it's not brain surgery, but it also is very scientific. And if we put operating procedures together that, um, that are, uh, you know, that are solid, then we really can bring out, up a lot of people. I, I was telling Mike on the drive up here, our, uh, we were talking about, well, can we get people to work up here and can we, uh, can we make this work? And a lot of the, uh, people that run our Michigan staff now are, are pretty young, you know, twenty year old kids. And it's been great to watch them develop, you know, personally and professionally, um, there's a, a community that gets built. Within the, the cultivation site that is really, really strong, it's, it's something that's hard to explain unless you've seen it. Um, people, they're very much family oriented, um, we would always, uh, we would have a lot of events early on. And I always tell the story, we, you know, I'm a different generation, uh, but we would have a bar tab at the local bar and at the end of the night, I. It was like, nobody would use the bar tab and, you know, that was a little unusual for me because most of them were cannabis users and they were alcohol. So that was, you know, something that was very, you know, very different from, from my, you know, from my perspective, um.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll be a, a wide range, I think that's the answer, is that we will have a wide range, we'll have, hopefully, there's, there's actually job training money. That's available from the, the state that we've, we've found and started talking to folks about and trying to build job training programs as well. So that we can train people up and same thing on the manufacturing side and, you know, so we really like to grow within. Like, then that's, that's what I've seen in his company in particular is like, you know, bringing people up from within and training them along the path. Cause then you can teach them from the ground up and that's actually really nice versus getting Californians who already think they know how to grow everything. And then they come in and they, they want to do it a certain way and we're like, no, 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 this is the process, like, just follow the process.
One other key point.
So it's really nice for us, like that's to, to be able to train people from the ground up.
One other key point I should have said is that we, we offer employee stock options for our, our employees. And so our sour, our, uh, our compensation plans are based on, um, certain, uh, levels. And then, uh, there's KPI bonuses for production that has, that is both cash and, uh, employee stock options. So that's something that's really important to us, we, we looked at becoming an, an ESOP, um, but not quite there yet. Maybe, maybe, maybe someday.
Don't want to take all your time, I know you, you have other things to chat about.
You had mentioned you had a presentation, I guess we couldn't see for technical reasons?
Yeah, we have a cord here, I can send it to you guys.
You can email it to me and I can send it to you.
You can do that, please. Guys and try to send you, there's some, I want, there's some better pictures too, it's really important.
It's like PowerPoint or PDF?
Yeah.
Well, we'll put it in PDF just to make it easy.
Easy is the keyword.
Universal.
Easy is.
We'll make his kids do it.
My only question, based upon the ordinance that, which you, I assume you've read and.
Yes.
Um, Max has commented on is if the city chooses to change the ordinances, the way we have it drafted now. Because these were all based on recommendations from OCM is, where do you see the roadblock? And how is this marriage, if you will, gonna work with the way we're guided by the state?
I, I think that's where, he's had some experience with OCM, they're still building the machine. So if we can provide them with a, a reasonable path and solution that creates jobs and, and hits on what they're trying to do. Then I think we can kind of help drive that bus in the right direction.
I think if my, if my understanding correctly, it's really mainly the daycare and that's really the only real, you know, that's the only real issue. And I think, having, being such a small town, there's like an expectation, you know, like, um, there's a reception that could be, be done. Um, you know, we wouldn't be opposed to trying to help them find another place that made sense for the community, um, you know, uh, that's number one. I, I, I have kids, I'm very sensitive of it, you know, I, I don't know how many kids go to that daycare or what the issue is.
And if you, if you talk to enough people in Black Duck and understood why it was created in the first place, even though it's in an industrial zone. It was created to support Anderson Fabrics, which the shade store took over.
Right.
So that their, so that their, their employees had daycare for their kids, but unfortunately, it had to, it had to grow and separate as well. So it remains kind of in an island on that side of town, but, yeah.
And so, and so we're very open, like, if there's a way for us to, to help and there's a, a solution that works and anyone has a good idea for us, we're very open to it. I mean, we're, obviously it has to be viable.
I think we just change the ordinance.
Yeah, so, you know, and, and, and again, we can make sure that there's nothing that's outwardly facing on that side, we can make sure there's, we can put. Things in place to make sure that there's no, as little impact as possible to, to, to them and around them, to make sure that it's not kind of. In anyone's face.
Sure, you know, just on the fencing.
Yeah, I mean, fencing, I mean, we could.
We, there, there wouldn't be an issue to add a six foot, um, privacy fence there, so that way, if, if anybody thought it was a problem, the kids aren't looking at the building. I mean, it is a potential, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't see screening as, yeah, exactly, I don't see screening as the office, it's just the way OCM drafted the ordinance.
And I, I'm trying to remember that in meetings, because I thought, I thought we had the obvious, it said it is zero to a thousand feet. Pretty tough.
I mean, I know like, we're.
This could be, yeah, that's the way I've read it, that's the way I understand it, because we can change this ordinance.
Yeah.
And that's what I think we need to do.
And I remember, you know, we, the thing is when we're drafting this, we didn't know Anderson was leaving, and so that may have shaped.
And that's what I shared with Mike.
Yeah, that, that probably would introduce some of that conversation too.
Right.
I mean, I think the bigger issue in my mind, you know, I think a fence is a great idea, but we, but we really like, we. We, we have to make sure there's no smell issues, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a, that, that's something that we want to be really sensitive for. We build rooms within rooms, we have scrubbers and all types of things to, to, to create, you know, to, to mitigate the smell.
Um, especially with the VFR system, the VFR system essentially is a condenser with a refrigerant loop that goes in and then it's a mini split. I'm sure you, some of you have mini splits in your houses.
Yep.
It's not bringing in outside air, it's not pushing air outside, and so that does help somewhat to, uh, you know, obviously we. That, that can be helpful and we really try to mitigate that, we don't want, we don't want it to, to cause problems, I, we, I care, like, I really do.
So theoretically, if there were no obstacles with the city's ordinance and this was a green light for your company. What is your timeline from, uh, to start up? What, 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 how long does it take you to go from purchase to opening?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll, I'll jump here on this one.
Yeah.
Well, we were talking about it in the car, so I think, uh, it's fresh in my mind, but I think, you know, all, if all goes well, we start building in. Probably January.
It's gonna take, it's, yeah, so it's gonna take us eight weeks to, to get construction drawings kind of done and hopefully approved. I don't know how long your, and you're out, your third party engineers or, or whatnot take, so I don't know.
Like I said, land use permits, you just have to fit inside the zone.
Yeah, so, okay, so perfect, so.
You're in.
You got it.
Right, so, so I mean, but we have to get him, we have to get the, the.
You gotta get the state to prove it too, right? Yeah.
So that's the entire one phase and that's where we have a little bit of gray area.
Sure.
But once we start, which we think we can get all that done by January, if we start, we can hopefully, if we can do a TCO. Which is, means that we can take different separate sections of that building.
Yeah.
We probably should be able to roll out each of those sections every two to three months. You know, maybe, maybe faster, but I think, you know, to get first product in, then you have another three to four months before we actually can sell that. Cause it takes about ninety days to, to grow the first product and it takes about two weeks to dry and turn it into flour. I think, no, I'm not, I think they got some dangerous, I'm just, I'm not, it's not my, not my cup.
Most of the time, they, you know, they don't, they never finish on time, but gotten a lot better at, at that, you know, depends on.
Yeah.
Who we hire and, you know, how winter, winter affects the, the build out and things like that.
And, and while we're talking to local contractors and why we want to get people who are involved and care about this community, because then maybe they'll send us their A team.
You know.
That's what we're hoping.
So, and then just to clarify, Max, you were talking about changing the ordinance, verbalize specifically what you're thinking of there. Yeah, the buffer zone, um, where the city of Black Duck shall prohibit the operation of a cannabis business within two hundred feet of a school as measured by the shortest line. Uh, occupied, see, see a library, shelter, operation counts, because within five hundred feet of the daycare as measured by the shortest line.
Yeah.
What is the distance? From property line to property line, because there's four parcels, you have to go to the closest one to head start, which is right across the street. It's less than two hundred feet.
Does it make a difference if they have offices in there instead of?
Right, so I actually thought of that too, I think that's a good idea, where's, can we put the offices in that front?
Cause there is offices there.
Right, that front building and then push everything to the other side, I, I think that's a great idea.
Plus, plus it's four parcels, so when I, and it, and it wasn't this company, but I have had contact with another, uh, wholesaling girl. And they asked the same question and our city attorney said that the farthest northeast parcel building would be fine. As the way the ordinance is set right now, because it's the furthest away.
Right.
Um, but that only takes up part of that white building.
Right.
And that's it.
Just drop it down to.
And, and we could say, we'll try and, I mean, we, we can try and put that floor plan to keep it offices or, or break room or, or something that's, you know. Innocuous in that front section.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't even worry about, I, I mean, we could make it zero feet.
Yeah.
That's citing the business application and.
And the state's gonna have the most oversight, the state and the county.
And, and that's the thing, if we set it at zero, we, we, still gonna be whatever the state says.
Correct.
Still potentially whatever the county says.
One thing you gotta be careful for is these guys are all trying to work nice with us and then next week we get someone that wants to put something over here, I build a laundry mat. And you know what I mean, like.
That's, that's the other thing that the council has to do, is taking some consideration is to, to helping out something go over. You don't know what else is gonna happen in the future, so you guys have set these parameters for a reason, but Misty's point is very clear.
So you could limit, you could limit, you know, the amount of locations, right?
Yeah, we, and we've set those businesses by zone for specific reasons too, yeah.
Question, you're talking about city council changing the resolution for that?
The ordinance.
Is there anywhere in that system for, um, public input?
Oh yes, every time there's a reading of a, of an amended ordinance, like I did tonight for the cemetery run. Is, I have to have it publicly noted that, that's why it's there. Whether somebody comes or not is not of my control, but I am required to. Hundred percent.
Now, the way it's worded, I don't know that it necessarily has to be an ordinance, it says the minimum buffer requirement may be reduced by a vote of support at a city council meeting. The city of Black Duck, it doesn't say amending the ordinance.
Which, which then actually addresses your question, because then the city council again gets to choose if you keep it as it is. So then they can approve us, but they could say we don't want the other person in the locker.
Yeah.
Citing the specific business, business application, and so if you read that, it doesn't have to, but, uh. So if that is our goal, I would still want to notify officially that neighboring business, the daycare. And get their input to any voting we do, I would want to see them here at a meeting expressing opinions. I don't see how we could change an ordinance by city council vote and not notify and seek input from the adjoining property owner.
I agree.
I just tell them you changed it.
There, there is, there is a, uh, producer right across the road too.
Oh, yeah, that, that is the thing.
So, it wasn't, that's, that's infused, yeah.
Yeah.
They're actually no longer there, but.
Oh, okay, well, sorry, I saw it on the back.
But that's okay, yeah, you're right, they were.
I was surprised to see it.
They were, but now they're leasing it to some other entity right now, so they're out, but yeah.
Some people that could be employed there will probably have kids, so, there you go.
Well, we're having to be helpful in anyway, so.
Isn't it like operated by the county? By cap?
By cap?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that the, that's the building we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Like county by cap?
So I mean, I, I would assume that the county had a problem with it, they would just address it in their plan review. I would imagine.
Because they're the ones that are gonna approve your license.
Yeah, so.
The only thing OCM needs from our city is that your business fits the zone.
Okay.
That's how I understand the way the rules are.
Is that with every city, that, that he goes there and then he goes to county level in the county of whatever city it was?
It depends on licenses, it.
Okay.
I think the city can have its own ordinance.
It can.
And then it overrides the.
Yes, it can have its own ordinance, the option was as if the city itself wants to do its own licenses.
I would highly recommend that, you know, then it's not that much work to have your own ordinance.
Hopefully not.
And that way you control it.
I, that's why we have it.
Yeah, I'd like see it at the next meeting and just do it, otherwise it's gonna become like.
Fibr.
Yeah, I'd like see it at the next meeting and just do it, otherwise it's gonna become like fiber.
Do what, Max?
Change it. Have get the get a public hearing going, that's.
We don't need a public hearing the way it's ordered.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could take a vote of it at the next council meeting, whether you want to approve their rezoning it.
No, 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 their business application.
Their business application.
So so let's do that.
Why are you looking at me?
Cause you're the one that makes the agenda.
I need the business application first.
There we go.
That's not me.
So does it make sense for us to also speak with the county and see how supportive they are?
Hundred percent, yes.
They are not supportive, then we may have to go down to ordinance.
Hundred percent.
Because then you guys get to control your destiny.
Yes, because we.
Waiting on them.
This is.
That's that's my, just what I'm hearing.
From what, from what I am and from what you're telling us, I'm like, I I don't want to be the one that says no, there's no way and I want to say no to this.
I'll wait and get the approval, we just gonna say they already said it's.
No, that's what I'm saying, but if, but we should just see if the county's gonna try and, oh, okay.
The the other prob.
Better than I do, that's why.
Well, the other problem to that is.
I'm, I'm I'm all in.
There there is an urgency, but we also have to remember that there is a limit of the licenses that the county can authorize. Based on the population of Beltrami County, it is only four.
Dispensaries or cul-de-sac?
Just dispensaries.
That's businesses.
Businesses.
Oh, total.
Yeah, it comes by how population, but I I'm gonna say it again, I would highly, highly, highly recommend the city doing its own ordinance. It's literally like one page and that essentially, because while we're dealt with this with another community, then it allows you to control.
Boy, I wonder if your ordinance actually is, is what it is, it already allows me, because it does mention cultivation and your ordinance.
It says, the only thing that we've relinquished to the county is the licensing.
Uh, so you would have to do something with licensing, is that what you're saying?
We'd have to do it all and we relinquish that to the county because their administration is bigger.
Uh, okay.
Otherwise, we'd have licensing oversight and all of the um uh reporting to O C M and we don't have the staff.
Right, right.
And that was recommended to the council and the planning commission because that would be me and only me. And I don't have that kind of time. So we gave it to the county because they have a bigger staff to do the licensing part, but the city set its own ordinance and its own setbacks with the county's support.
And what we've relinquished is licensing and ongoing supervision.
Oversight.
Oversight.
Correct. Cause once a year, the police department or the sheriff's department needs to check in that type of stuff. We don't have that type of oversight. We're too small. But every governing entity had to set an ordinance, even townships. That's why we have that, so I can get some feedback. I'll try to get ahold of Brent myself too and see how it all works together.
So, the way I'm understanding, technically you guys can make a motion passive to relinquish the setback to all twenty people.
Yeah.
Whatever. Then from that, then they have to do the city business license, that would pretty much get through because it hits the zoning and it hits the setback. Then from there, you'll have to vote the county, get approved by the county board only for their actual permit, correct?
I think it's the opposite.
No, because uh, oh, that's.
I think it's the opposite.
We we just need to get the county to allow us to have one of the licenses or licenses.
Yes.
So we we would have to, we take those.
And of which there are four total, is that right, Christina?
Based on the population of the county.
Yeah.
Cause it's one for every twelve thousand five hundred people.
Those are businesses regardless of its retailer.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that was my understanding too, I just, you're more open than I am, so.
So it sounds like we need to to reach out to the county.
Push some people down there.
So is there any, you're saying there has been no businesses so far that.
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, unless somebody else has heard it and it's not populated. The only ones I know of are the ones on Red Lake on tribal land.
Right.
And that's it, which don't count.
Okay. Right.
Well, thank you guys so much for your time and the engagement. We really appreciate it.
No, let us come, let us come into your town and have a nice conversation. We do appreciate it.
Send the presentation to Christina.
Yeah, I'll send it.
We'll send you more information just to make sure that you, you know.
We'll be in communication.
Yes, thank you for your help. Thank you for putting us on the schedule.
No problem.
I hope you guys don't mind, we're gonna drive around and actually try to get to know the place. I drove in, I I flew in from five at five A M this morning from Reno, so. I'm trying to just get a few things going here, but thank you very much. Pleasure, pleasure.
It's over on First Street if you want to see the finest moment town.
Love it, I love it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
How we doing? Thank you, sir. We'll get you the information as well. Oh, he did, perfect.
Okay, they go through Funkley, they go up to the park.
Yeah. It's gonna get lost. Thanks, Ron, for coming.
There you go. Yes, and we'll move on to.
I don't know what information you guys have in front of you, so.
Yeah, so what was uh put in the packet was all the communication for the Gulf Board and then um the feedback from uh what was presented to the Gulf Board. Um, obviously, uh Misty is in a position where there's um uh equipment that needs to get replaced. The the golf cart is a no brainer and it should be absorbed within this year's budget. The biggest um conversation we need to discuss and consider for the September ninth eighth meeting is this um this reels motor mower to uh help Misty save her tea boxes, because we've been basically using really old machinery to do a task that it was not made for.
Well, it is, I mean, the green, the bull have them are are fine for doing the job, they're just tired. They're just old machines that were just constantly patching together and.
I can vouch for the one that's experiencing bad rings, it's got blow by, it pressurizes the crankcase and oil comes out of the breather and we'll plug up the.
Yeah, they're they're not just.
Yeah.
They're junk.
And and the Gulf Board's known that this has been an issue and we've been discussing uh replacing it for the last two, last year and a half, but um Misty wanted to try to save some money and see if she can get it to work through the twenty five season. And that has not been super successful.
So.
And we're waiting till next year, it's gonna go up to ten grand.
These are the two pieces that are.
Oh, that was good, good idea.
These are the ones you have or?
Yes.
That are tired.
Well, why don't we take it to one of our small engine repairers and bring it back to.
Actually, actually, we made him come to it.
And he just told you how he felt about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're thirty years.
That, this one's twice the size.
Misty, what can you tell them about more than what I have in here about that reels master from M T I that um makes this the unit?
Well, there's nothing that I I can really say besides what you have in front of you, but I'm I just think Toro is a better machine for us to choose over the Jacobson anymore.
And it's Minnesota.
Yeah.
And M T I is a great equipment place. We take all of our school equipment there, the ones that we don't.
And that's what I'm dealing with.
And where are they located?
Minneapolis.
Okay, you take your equipment to Minneapolis personally or?
Or the school?
Yeah.
They also make house calls.
They come.
They bring her reels back every year. They pick her reels up on what she currently has. Sharpen them, do the maintenance and bring them back the next season. We're already doing a bunch of business with them all there.
They also do our irrigation.
They're a great, great company. If it's from them, it's well maintained, so.
This is, um, they had four machines identical to this that came from some kind of up and equal course, he said, and um.
You're not an up and equal.
Oh, no. Oh, hello.
When did you get this one?
So this is the last one left, he said. So I asked if, you know, if he thought it was still gonna be there next year. And he said, oh, probably not. And then I said, well, then what do you think I should budget for the next season if I need to get something comparable to this and?
What did he say, sixteen? Sixteen to twenty two.
Yeah.
So, say ten thousand, get it now, get it done. And the the thing we're getting, is that specifically a tea box mower or is it called a drilling mower?
It could be a fairway mower as well because it's a tri cut or whatever, but he said it, they are using it for uh tea box. That's what he recommended. So we'll use it for our tea boxes and then we also use it for the collars on the greens. Use it for both. And the tea boxes get mowed twice a week, collars twice a week, and the tea boxes also are twice a week, so. Um. Probably eight hours, I suppose, something like that.
And then the greens, that's a separate mower or?
Yeah, that's, we have a separate mower for the greens.
Yeah.
So would we would still keep the old two thousand four one or what would happen to that?
Those two? Well, that's a whole nother decision. I mean, after I get that replaced, then I get to decide on what I'm, what I could possibly do to get rid of those.
Scrap pile.
Yeah, no one, even M T I said we probably wouldn't be able to.
I asked M T I, probably, I probably asked him twice now and I know this spring I had asked him, what can I do to get rid of those or, you know, swap them out? I'd like to get rid of both of these machines and replace them. He was like, you're not gonna get anything for them. I know some of my staff would just absolutely love to have them scrap over themselves, so. That would be an issue, making them disappear, I'll say that.
Mm hmm. Free to whoever.
My opinion's already been stated in the Gulf Board letter, Gulf Board matters, so.
Soon as I seen it, it was from M T I.
Well, that's good to hear. I'm glad that somebody else has had a good experience with them.
Yeah.
For what it's worth.
No.
Every time the stuff goes wrong out there, I generally get a call, please just buy the new mower.
You're not on the hook. I still have.
I'm sure there's something else, but you guys.
We're slowly ticking away.
Public Works is right behind the golf course on this one.
Yeah, I mean, the the golf courses, his son set it a couple of um debts this year.
Well, of course.
I mean, I, for the price, it's worth just doing another internal loan with the real, our um unrestricted revolving loan fund for this for this amount instead of bonding for it, because it's, it's what we did with rough mower, it's less than twenty grand, so um you could do a five year on this and have it done very quickly.
And I didn't try to heckle with the guy at all. I just, I'm not good at that.
Well, I probably won't get any cheaper. I already asked you, you know.
Twelve, five and then plus the service.
The the service that they're gonna do, but then you don't have to have them serviced.
In twenty six.
Mentioned it, like, let's get the same, put in good shape for you before it comes and.
If the, if the majority of the board is in favor of doing this, then I, in the in the period between now and September eighth's meeting, I would be able to draft the the resolution in the language for you to approve the financing so we can make the purchase. We just need to make sure that M T I knows that we are completely solid to do this and this is just our timeline. So we need to sign something with them, knowing that they're gonna get it.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, more listen to, all in.
Okay.
Secure it, lady. Okay.
Just get your guy in.
So then the, the other issue of the cart.
So the.
We can't keep those and hang them up here.
No.
No, but the golf cart, the golf cart, I think the Gulf Board pretty much um was okay with. I, I mean, it's it's more of a um making sure the the city council is just in involved with this decision above the Gulf Board, because it is a unique situation, but we had a fleet of thirty at the beginning of the season. We are now down because one of those gas carts is basically garbage now, not basically, it's garbage. So in order for the department to keep its fleet of thirty, this is the decision the Gulf Board has agreed to. It's more of a, it just making sure the city council knows that we're spending this money and it's not budgeted.
After speaking with Misty out there that day and hearing that thirty carts is the is her number, that's what she needs, that's that's.
In order for the business to stay where it's doing, it needs to have that many carts.
I don't mean to try to quote you, but said that, you know, there's even times when thirty's not enough.
Oh, yeah.
You you know, but at the same time, it as a general rule, all those carts get rented out, I mean.
There's always two broke down.
You you look at the at the cart rentals, what their, what the fees are, if that says, hey, everybody likes those golf carts, they're using them, they're renting them. But and even if the current one is garbage, they're still gonna give us twelve hundred for it. They wouldn't give.
No, the one that we're saying is garbage is a gas cart.
Oh.
So they had.
It's about twenty.
So that brought her down to twenty nine.
Okay.
Okay, one of the electrical cart, electric carts had an issue that we couldn't repair. It went down to versatile to the service. In the meantime, they gave us a loner. We have the opportunity to keep that loner and pay for it, get our our cart back and that will keep us at thirty.
So what's being offered twelve hundred is the twenty seventeen.
That was if we did a trade in.
Easy old car.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was three hundred and fifteen dollars to fix that cart.
It was, yeah. Yeah.
Which is nothing, really.
Yeah. I just didn't want to go to Brainerd, but I still have to. Mike, yeah.
I have the invoice, so it'll be in the.
Mike needs a smaller trailer.
It'll be in the bill report.
Don't you, Mike?
You would need a trailer.
No, you and I need a trailer.
Need the trailer and vehicle to pull stuff.
Need the smaller trailer.
What are you thinking, like, eight like ten?
Well, he has nothing to haul any of my stuff, so I have to go get my stuff from home. It's true. If I go to Brainerd to go pick up my cart, I'm gonna have to take my own personal stuff to get it, am I not?
She's not wrong.
I'm not wrong.
It was not wrong. How many times did you break your snowmobile trailer?
I, I just gave up on that thing.
Overloading that there. Well, it's something to, something to think about.
It is something.
Basically like a seven by twelve, something to haul carts around and zero turn.
So if you could get two on it or?
Yeah, versus, you know, a twenty four foot heavy equipment trailer.
Yeah.
With a cart on it.
It's a little overkill.
Well, not to mention then, I mean, if she has something to do like that, then my pickup, my trailer is comfortable, yeah. I'm sure she, I'm sure she'd rather use, you know, her own pickup if need be, but if we at least had a trailer.
Yeah, that would save, that would save part of it. I think that's a big consideration discussion for the Gulf Board first, even though, because we kind of down to people of that, but.
You need an old eighty seven F one fifty out there.
It's just little things. I mean, it doesn't happen very often, but you know.
Well, it does, and then if we're busy doing stuff, I mean, at least if there's a trailer, you know.
I can hook up.
That at least.
Yeah.
I mean, I have my own trailer, but I just, I'm a little bit of a smug about it. I just don't, I don't think I should have to use my personal stuff to go and do stuff with the city. I just don't love that. I will and I do, but I just don't love it.
And and unfortunately, historically, many staff has done that in the past. I mean.
Yeah.
Compressors, all kinds of stuff has been, has has been put into everywhere to use.
Stars to get freezers or fridges or, you know, our truck and trailer.
Exactly. We're just slowly chipping away, so we have our own. Okay.
But I think we're all good with it. We just sound good. Well, yes.
I'll I'll make magic in two weeks.
That's what we want.
No, thank you. We appreciate that.
Oh, why did Mike come up before the general fun?
Cause I knew my stuff was gonna take longer.
I thought we did all the lift station repairs.
That's what I said to you.
I don't know what planet you're living on, but it is not this one.
We have, I, I had the privilege of talking with Mike at the parade, so, huh, go ahead.
Um, I was hoping actually that Tim was gonna stick around, because I had asked a question of him and never got an answer. Um, just to touch on that quickly, do you remember what Tim said on when we would be, you know, getting funding on our large. when we would be, you know, getting funding on our large project? Like, were we still two years, three years out?
I'd say two, because even after the PR is done, accepted and put out there, then we have to apply for funding.
Yeah, and I couldn't.
So my guess is is based on fiscal years, we probably won't see any awards until the end of quarter three of two thousand twenty six. So you may not see anything be able to get bid on changed until twenty seven. If it's earlier than that, I'd be surprised.
I was thinking it would be twenty eight. I mean, we're just about into twenty six, I think, by the time that we get anything moving, it sounded like. That's why I just wanted to ask him.
I would say two years for sure.
So the reason that I asked that is, again, the main lift station went down. Different problem this time, right? So you know, before we had piping replaced, that's what we had did there because that was rotting out, right? We couldn't pump, we were just pumping water on itself. Well, this time it was the controller in there that went down. I was here forty some hours straight, had to sit here overnight, turn the pump on and off physically by hand every thirty minutes so that essentially the town didn't back up, right? That, you know, we're getting to the point here where i- it's like driving an old car, right? You start having to keep putting money in it, keep putting money in it. Next thing you know, the amount is up to you. You could have just bought a new one. And that's where we're getting with this, is that I keep putting money into these lift stations and we're just throwing it away. Minnesota Pump, who does a very large majority of lift station work throughout the state of Minnesota, over North Dakota, South Dakota, all that. The panel that we have at the main lift station down there is so old, it has components in it that the main guy that runs around doing this has never even seen before. Doesn't even know how to wire up. You know, so we're sitting there in the dark, getting bit like crazy, trying to figure out how to bypass this, how to make it run. It's it's getting to where I don't know if we're going to have two years on some of these things. So as of right now, we have what, five, six lift stations in town? The main lift station, the new one by our building, which isn't a problem. It's new right now. Uh, the West End, the Black Mallard, Forest Street, the Forest Street, we have six lift stations. We should really have seven. We have essentially nothing more than a a you know, septic lift pump behind the motel that services the motel, the bar and the grocery store. I I mean, it's an absolute joke over there. We're getting through with that. But our main three lift stations at this point are what we call the main lift station. That's the one that every ounce of wastewater in this town runs through. And that is just south of our water plant down by the shop. The next one in line from there is what we call the West End Lift Station. And that's on Oscar Avenue over there, just south of uh the apartment buildings by Dollar General. Now that one services everything on Oscar, up onto Brandle. And it from there, it lifts it and it forced mains it over behind the old Anderson Building, where it meets back up with the gravity flow sewer and goes into the main lift station. The other one, the next one in line on the top three is the one up at um Liberty Drive. That lift station up there. So the Liberty Drive one and the West End one, we are at a point where we're pulling pumps up out of these lift stations on damn near a daily basis. The reason for that is is multifaceted. One is the pumps are getting worn out, the volutes, the the impellers, everything's getting wore. As it gets wore, it develops burrs, essentially, very tiny burrs. And what happens is all the stuff that is marketed as flushable, whatever, whether it's wipes, paper towels, anything, as long as it goes down the drain, it's damn flushable, right? What happens is those sit down towards the bottom of these lift stations. So they collect down there, your pumps sit just off the floor level in there, so they're pulling from the bottom. When these pumps go to start, one, they're wore out, they're tired. Two, they are single phase power. And what happens with the single phase power is that when those pumps go to start, they start very slowly with single phase, so they start to creep and they ramp up. And what happens is you have all those rags sitting there, the burrs are holding them. When that starts to slowly ramp, what it does is it grabs the rags, you know, just in general rags what we refer to. I mean, it's could be just about anything. And what it does is it pulls them and then it locks that pump up. So what you get is a situation where that pump is trying as hard as it can to turn, right? It's in a a high torque situation where it's trying, it's trying until hopefully one of the the mechanical overrides kicks in and it it kicks it out, so it's not drawing power before it blows something in the panel or blows the pump itself or the windings or any of that. So again, that's wore out. The other problem with, like I said, the single phase, whereas if you have three phase, there's two different ways to get three phase. Either it's close by and we can just run standard three phase right to a panel or we can do what's called a phase converter, which converts single phase to three phase via VFD controller, variable frequency drive, right? If you're able to do that, that three phase hits when it comes on. It hits right now, it's ready to go. It pops at such an RPM that if there is something right there, most of the time it'll grab it and suck it straight through and send it down the line. The reason that the main lift station, for the most part, doesn't plug the way it does is they're much larger pumps, right? The volutes are larger, it's able to pass more through. You look at the West End and the Liberty Drive one, those are smaller pumps. And Liberty Drive in and itself, that lift station only services Liberty Drive. Now, what's up on Liberty Drive? Single family homes, right? Generally speaking, younger kids in those houses up there, younger families. We have such a problem with wipes and towels and stuff up there, it's ridiculous. Same with the one over on Oscar. We have the apartment buildings on Oscar, right? Lot of young people in there with younger families, younger kids, heavy, heavy on the wipes there too. So it's a multifaceted problem, right? The wipes, the the non-flushables that get flushed, the worn pumps, the single phase. It's the whole gamut of everything that can go wrong is going wrong. Right? And what I need you guys to understand is that at the West End and at Liberty, I could kind of keep them at bay if something bad happens, you know, a- and and they go down. But then you're talking about having, whether it be Jules Sins or Bob Sicono or whoever. You're talking having a pump truck here nonstop until the problem can get fixed. Because if those lift stations aren't working, someone's getting sewage in their basement at some point. We have to really start thinking about doing something sooner than later. I don't think we have the time to wait for three years to do stuff anymore. You know, we've been talking about this, we've been working on this project, Mel Christina, what, two thousand nineteen, early twenty when we started on all this? It's been slow going. I mean, we're all doing what we can do. We're gonna get caught with our pants down at some point, so to speak here. It's inevitable, it's gonna happen. I know it is.
Now what we know what the problem really is and obviously we've known it for a while, what's the solution? If we don't wait, what's the solution?
The the ultimate solution right now is essentially a a full rehab on the West End Lift Station, Black Mallard Lift Station, and then probably the main lift station. I have a very rough number right now. The West End Lift Station and Black Mallard Lift Station, which is Liberty Drive, are almost identical lift stations. Right now, we can swap parts between the two. The rest of the lift stations around town are all completely different. You're looking for a new panel, new pumps, new floats, new rails. I- it's a it's a complete rehab of the lift station. You're looking at roughly around fifty thousand a lift station.
Would that include upgrading the power to three phase?
Either upgrading to three phase or using the phase converter. The West End Lift Station on Oscar has three phase power running on the other side of the road. Where that one can be done. Um, the one on Liberty, the closest that three phase is there is all the way back over to Maine. So on a price standpoint, Liberty is gonna be a a phase conversion is. Yeah, yeah.
And then the main lift station also is just single phase, right?
Uh, the main lift station, trying to think in my head now. I believe the main station is single phase right now. I I should mention too, and and these numbers are moving because I'm I'm working with people literally minutes ago, still trying to get things. I need to check, that sets the Oscar one and the Black Mallard one up. That sets them so that they are um generator capable. Right now, if power goes out, the only lift station I can run in this town is the main lift station. I shouldn't say that. The West End can be ran too, but we don't have a generator that can run it. The last time that we had to do anything, I actually called uh Stoltz Welding and used his welding truck to run that pump down there.
So there is a possibility Minnesota Roll Water does small midi loans um of less than two hundred grand for you know, ten years. We did um a loan with them when we uh modif- when we did all of the um meter reading software and everything, we made everybody on the Bluetooth session. Um, and we've done many loans for them with them for other sewer, small uh small debts. That is an opportunity if the board is willing for me to go through the steps to find out, but we need full on pricing in order to go through it.
I wanted this conversation tonight because if we're gonna go, you know, quite honestly, in my opinion, you know, Minnesota Pump has given us so many different quotes throughout the last five years on doing this, right? And I mean, those guys get a little tired of doing the same thing over and over and over, all these companies do. But before I go and say, okay, I wanna lock this down, I wanna know that you guys are on board with me here and that we're gonna do this, you know what I mean? Before I go and spin my wheels yet again, I got plenty of other stuff to be doing.
I personally do not want sewage backing up in my basement.
It's one of those things that most people don't think about, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind. But it's really crucial to town that these things are operating.
Yeah, I think if Christina, if that's an option, I think we should.
I I think it's the only option.
As quickly as we can pursue it, let's go forward, because we nobody wants, we don't wanna have uh two hundred people with sewage in the basement.
The the process is still the same as any debt obligation. It's just Minnesota Roll Water has a has a fund that they can do this very quickly. But we still have to go through the bonding process in order to do so, but it's a small dollar amount. I know two hundred thousand doesn't sound like a small dollar amount, but it is compared to very large.
In the scheme.
They're in the scheme of things. It's a small, it's it's like a home equity loan. It's it's what we need to do to do this, but we just need full numbers so that it can go through the process.
And and like I say, right now, it's Oscar, Liberty.
Those three.
And the main. The other ones are low enough flow that if something does go on, we can keep up with those, right? It it's a little easier to maintain.
If you compound not just what we're paying Minnesota Pump to help um Mike get these things done and our local plumbers and our local pumpers. It's the payroll.
And the overtime.
And the overtime and the burnout that we're doing to our staff by not taking this and wait if we if we continue waiting, cause I I mean, it seemed like a great idea to wait until the PR was done and get everything done together, but if it's not, if your car's not working and you need a new alternator, you put it in.
The with the PR report, all the pumps and everything were gonna be of the same brand, same type, and then moving forward, you know, the same new technology that's out there for.
Yes, and with that.
Get a notice on his phone and go.
Well, we did a bunch of that.
That in mind, I'm definitely not forgetting that because that's come from me to begin with, right? Is that I want everything as close to the same as absolutely possible. These lift stations, other than, you know, I told you that these two are very similar. Your pump size, all this stuff depends on, you know, static head, dynamic head, flow, everything changes. So they're not all going to be interchangeable, but if the user interface towards me can be, then yes, that's that will be built in with whatever we do here. And that again is where on the larger project down the road, we need to, and quite frankly, honestly, you guys will have to trust in me and listen to me a bit because there'll be times that there's certain things that we just cannot take the lowest bid on. Because oftentimes in these lift station projects, you know, I mean nationwide, every outfit is using different vendors, different pumps, different this, different that. So we're going to want to stick with Minnesota Pump. We have a very good relationship with them. Like I said, I was here overnight doing that. I have the personal cell phone number from Minnesota Pump. I made a call, a guy got out of bed and came to try to help that night. Had to go back home so we could get parts out of the main branch. They're always willing to answer when I call. They always help. They do what they can. There's certain relationships that I won't break. I just won't.
So use them for help.
That and that's that's what we do right now. That's who I use. They service our stuff and they're great. And going forward, I mean, they know what we have. They're designing what I'm talking about right now. And when we do get to the PR end of things, they need to be the ones involved there too. Follow kind of what I'm saying? So it sounds like everybody's on board. I heard you.
You're the expert here and if you say, hey, I don't think we've got two years.
Yeah, I really don't think we do.
We as a council have to go, yeah, oh, that we don't have two years.
I will get fine tuned numbers and have that.
I mean, I'm sure there's other things you'd rather do. We're can rebuild.
But but it's it's again, it's a very vital and and crucial part of our infrastructure that we just can't keep band-aiding. It doesn't make sense. I mean, we're we're throwing money down the drain, literally at this point. Yeah, yeah, so.
It just progressively gets is getting worse is what's happening.
It's getting worse and worse. I'm not putting thirty grand. That's it for me. Thank you, guys.
I need a break before I start.
Yeah, it depends on how long you're.
Cut it all.
Had our first finance committee meeting. And I've made some updates since then. We have another finance committee meeting this Wednesday.
So I'll have more updates for the council. September eighth. Right now, things are going really well. I expect. What we would normally have our work session in September would be our special. Meeting to approve the preliminary levy just as a adds up. So the. The debt schedule, I'm I put at the end of this PDF, so I'm gonna jump. Into just some highlights here. You guys can follow along with this. Um, but I'm gonna jump right down to. To these um spreadsheets first. Um, in terms of revenue. Right now, we're looking at a total levy levy of four fifteen sixty fifty eight. That's a decrease over this year of fifteen thousand three twenty three. With an increase or with a contribution from the liquor store fund to transfer to the general fund of sixty thousand. Um, our committee, when we met two weeks ago, it was fifty thousand. Um, I will explain to you the reason when I get to the debt schedule. Um, things that we have done on the revenue side, uh there is a. Class four D transition aid that's coming in two thousand twenty six. You may remember. In the packet at the beginning of August, there was um a payment this year in two thousand twenty twenty five for that. That's that transition aid because we're gonna see a dip in our L G A after twenty six. So that is a new revenue. Um, we also have our small cities assistance into the street fund or street repair. That's also included in our revenues. And I'll mention that when we get to the um, street budget. Other than that, um, we've increased charges for service a little bit for two thousand twenty six. Mainly that's for the license center. And everything else is basically about the same same, um, except for next year is a permit. Year, excuse me, uh rental inspection year. So there's. And in and out on revenue and expenditures for that. But the bottom of this page kinda highlights the percentages I have on the on the summary for each. Department over twenty five. If we go into individual departments, um. With administration first, the biggest change. Actually, there's two, the two biggest changes that's gonna happen with the administration budget is first of all. Normally, the administrator and the deputy clerk's wages are shared throughout. Various departments, general fund being one, license center being the second one, water, wastewater and liquor. I'm removing it from the liquor store. In twenty six. So more of those wages are being allocated into the general fund. It should be represented completely from the general fund. The following year in twenty seven, my goal is to remove it from water and wastewater. We're also doing that from the public works standpoint. Um, but removing it from the liquor department, liquor store and the cemetery, which is an enterprise fund. So I'm not gonna discuss that this year or this evening. The other main change to the administration budget is that huge increase in uh auditing services. That we didn't have for twenty five because we got the new auditor. The liquor department, water and wastewater still have their. Um, their enterprise funds with the same amount dedicated to the audit, but the. Administration fund and the license center is taking up the rest of those charges. So what you're seeing at twenty two thousand four oh five and blue under audit servicing, that would just be what's coming out of the administration fund for. The estimated costs from ceiling next year. Um, I also added more money in to the election expense because next year will be a governor election. So we'll have. A primary. And a general election. But no. No presidential primary. Uh, the next budget. And we'll go over highlights on is the police department and that with Josh. Couple of big things that are really gonna change this budget. Is we're not budgeting for a second full-time officer. We've been doing that for two years and we've had no success hiring one. And that's been a really large contribution to this fund and it has had no success. That doesn't mean we're gonna stop trying to hire a second full-time officer, but we cannot. We can't explain asking to levy money for something we're not using. What other agencies? Otherwise, the department stayed on its operating lines very close on wages and benefits. Josh said that they may have to replace their handguns to mirror for Beltrami County in twenty six, but at this time it's not required. So we didn't change anything in their uh. Uniforms or their. Excuse me, words, equipment fund. Sorry, a long day. Uh, the fire budget. Very close as well to two thousand twenty five, um, the operating is gonna stay about the same. Insurance is being increased based on recommendations from the league. Um, we also increased the wages. To mirror the call volume. One thing to note is at the point of my budget meeting with Brian. The department was at forty four calls year to date. That's how many calls the department took all last year. So their call volume has increased, um, which means we're paying. You know, we have to pay them more, obviously. But in order to um supplement that, Brian and I have also finally. I think Brian finally agreed to pay the assistant and the fire chief. An increased monthly stipend too, so that also participates for those um wages.
Number of calls also, like if they get returned. Like call back.
Oh, you mean canceled and routed?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they still have to somewhat respond, yeah. Yeah, even though they don't go in and get suited up and pull the truck out of the out of the garage, there's it's still a call. I think that's the biggest things for the fire budget. Uh, streets. Like I noted before. There will be some increase in wages. Uh, because of the reallocation of uh Mike's department into streets. Because we're redo, taking it away from the liquor department, cemetery department, cemetery. Um, that's small cities assistance line in orange. That's the street materials. So that is what we would normally budget for street materials. And plus what small cities assistance includes, and we rounded it up because. The amount from small cities is a little bit smaller in twenty six than it is in twenty five by like three grand. So the committee felt as though we should keep it on par with what we had for two thousand twenty five, so that's why it's at forty seven thousand. The other thing that's new on this department is um. Mike wants to start a five-year depreciation for the public works. Uh, truck replacement, um, two thousand twenty five, we made the last payment to GM Financial for the two city trucks. Um, but we don't really need to replace them right now, so what we wanna do is take that same dollar amount that we paid for that GM Finance. Set it aside, so in another five years at a ten year sta- standpoint, we will replace those and have the money instead of having to do debt for it. So basically, it's exactly what we're paying now, but we'll have it in five more years. Yep, I think that's it. Parks Department, because we didn't get the local option sales tax. Approved for this part of what we tried for. We kinda set aside in two thousand twenty five that we were not gonna put funding into the restroom resi- renovations. Because we were hoping for that sales tax to come in. That didn't pass, so we put that back in and that um. Repairs and maintenance to buildings, so we brought that back up to four thousand. Um, we still feel like that will definitely be used. Stop me, you guys, if I'm going too fast if you have questions.
No, I'm just trying to remember all the other.
Um, the next page goes over the council budget, street lighting, government buildings, planning and zoning. So the council budget very similar to two thousand twenty five. It's a little bit reduced because we have a fairly tenured board. Um, the committee decided to lower the training and travel expenses for any and to any like. League of Minnesota Cities trainings or um. Out of town. Things, so whatever, uh, that went down a couple thousand dollars. I am sorry, but I'm starting to lose my brain. It's almost eight thirty, starting to shut off. Uh, street lighting budget, same. Uh, government buildings. I have a, I kept the five thousand dollars in there for repair and maintenance to buildings. I don't know if I'll need to change that at all, lower it or increase it at this point because I'm still in the infancy. Of doing the paperwork with. Our partners at Beltrami Electric for the city hall renovations, but I don't believe I'll need. Any more than this amount. If we get the renovations done in two thousand twenty six. So I'm trying to keep that as close to this year's budget as possible. The planning and zoning, um, that's the line that I charge the rental inspection services with our rental inspector into, so I've increased that. Um, you saw the offset in the ren- in the revenues, so that should be the same. Uh, this page will review the library and then the license center budget. So the biggest thing that the committee didn't see last time that everybody's seeing tonight is I did have the levy. Uh, sent to me from K R L S. They're asking for twenty thousand nine ninety five. It's an increase of about six hundred dollars. I put it in there. Um, we're decreasing the repairs budget. Down to three thousand instead of seven thousand because we're doing all the renovations right now. So the budget is very close to two thousand twenty five. It's decreased a little bit. And then the license center, the biggest thing you're seeing here is a bigger increase in wages because of that reallocation that I spoke of earlier. If I put in here, I added uh auditing and accounting of two thousand dollars for the um year-end audit into this budget. And I increased the opposite wise. Um, one thing to note to the committee, one of the things they asked me to double check is that I share. The fund or the the debt for the copier lease. Um, when I signed that lease, when the when the city signed the lease for this current copier. Three years ago, it was pre license center. So we have a base rate that we pay every month for those copiers that are in all the different departments. And that rate gives you a number of copies per month. If you start exceeding that ri- that limit, then you start paying overages. Because of the license center going in and the amount of increased copies we're printing. We're getting overages every month for this department of almost four hundred bucks. So I've asked Marco to reevaluate that and see if we can either extend the lease or change the base rate to account for the increased. Copies and he is sending me some literature. He does have a way to do it. I don't know if that's gonna extend the five-year lease. Anymore or just change what's left of our lease, but I'll, I'm hoping to have that September eighth for you guys to see. So hopefully that'll help it. It will not reduce it completely to the. The contract rate that we signed pre license center though, but it will hopefully reduce some of the overage charges that the city is getting. Um, for having this machine in city hall. That's all my notes independently of. The departments. So the next page is um. Uh, T N T. Uh, estimation or example. So I did receive from the assessor's office our net tax capacity for two thousand twenty six. As you can see going across the page is continuously dropping. That means the valuation of the city's market value is going down. That. Will offset our mill rate, so that's another reason why I adjusted the um liquor store transfer to the general fund. Since the committee met. Because if I kept it at fifty thousand, your mill rate would be at like a hundred and six. So I changed that rate. I changed that revenue and it dropped it. Um, down to what I thought was manageable at this point in the budget. But it's still an overall increase to an individual city tax based upon where our debt is. And because of the net tax capacity. Questions yet?
Someone will receive like. The co-op adding fertilizer plant.
So generally, any builds within a within a year do not affect your net tax capacity for two years. So they're building now.
Yep.
Okay, so you won't see that hit our capacity until two thousand twenty seven. And that's when it's captured.
That's.
I'm not forget, I put the debt schedule in there somewhere, I thought. Let me get my, look at my paper and they can pass it around. We've debt schedule. Gives you what we have to for bond payments. The H R A contribution. Um, any other debt that's revenue related. It also includes the new fire department debt, which the relief is funding. Um, from their special equipment fund. So that doesn't hit the general funds debt or the overall levy. Um, but the other new debt that's in there is the new public works um equipment that we. Bonded last summer. So overall, right now, it shows as a decrease, but here are the unknowns that we do not know about. We don't know what our contribution will be to our healthcare insurance, to our full-time employees. I won't know that till after Wednesday. Um. I don't know if that's gonna change to the healthcare savings account contribution either. Uh, my guess is it won't because I think thirty two hundred is the max deductible that we can pay into, so I don't see that. Being a huge change. Um, and the other unknown is in the committee meeting. The lead guidance that I had for workers' compensation increases said no increase next year. I don't believe that. I don't think that. I'm kind of. Being a little cautious. I've built ten percent into all the individual general fund budgets right now. Because it's been going up and going up and going up for the last four to five years. And I have a really hard time understanding that it's gonna be flat. So. I've left it at that rate and the committee's discussion is this, if we approve the preliminary levy a little higher. And there's lead guidance further on in this year when we see what the dividends are. Coming in or any uh claim rates. For us towards the end of the year, then if we get that done before December, when the final. Uh, levy has to be approved, we can drop it. We obviously, we just can't increase it. So this is the conversation the committees had so far. Um, I think I also provided you guys, I hope I did, since I didn't put that in there. The proposed budget from K R L S, so that this document, I believe. Would have been in there. I just didn't move it in. To. My thumb drive. Questions?
Yeah, that uh page that you didn't include in there, I think that was in the draft that I.
Oh, okay, good, well.
I remember seeing that.
The only thing that would have changed then, Ron, uh Ron would have been the general fund line. And then the overall levy total because of that uh liquor contribution.
But I'm correct in reading out that the levy is being reduced from last year about. But I'm correct in reading out that the levy is being reduced from last year about three and a half percent.
That's where we're sitting right now, but we, we still have some unknowns, obviously. That's, that's my biggest thing. I wanna make sure. I hammer into you guys is that we're not done yet. Um, but that's kind of what we're looking at. Um, obviously, I still have water rate studies to do. Work on the liquor. Uh, Misty and I should work on the golf budget too, but. By taking those wages out of the liquor store and the cemetery, what that's gonna do is that's gonna give. More. Less operating that we have to contribute to the cemetery. What's been draining the cemetery is our operating. We don't make any money in the cemetery. We just need to take that amount and filter it someplace else. And wages unfortunately has been the biggest drain on that department. On the liquor side, if they're doing better, then we're doing better and potentially could contribute more in the long run. But generally. If you are in a certain department and that's where you work, that's the department that you'd be paying wages. And I think we just need to get to that point. So it's kind of a two-year plan in my mind at some point. Especially this department will not be funded by anything except the general fund. And that's, that's a big change, because it's only the two of us. But it's been shared from so many departments in the past and those departments just need to fund themselves.
Makes sense. Dale, I had a good one too. Question just flew away.
Oh yeah, the next topic, agenda topic, it's actually another unknown. I haven't been able to contribute to this budget. So if you want, I can move on.
Yeah, because I'm not gonna remember what, what it was I wanted to ask.
Okay, great. Let's keep going. It's, it's been a long day. Uh, Minnesota paid leave um, starts January one. And I'm starting to get more information from the state. Uh, the league's got another, has got a webinar this, this Wednesday that I'm going to attend. But this is something that was adopted last year. We knew it was gonna start January one. I'm just now starting to figure out how. The city has to fund it. So when Shonda was here earlier before we actually started the meeting, I kind of gave her an overview. First of all, Minnesota paid leave is um, is across the board. It doesn't matter what your employer is. You can opt, you can't opt out. Those are the rules. The only way you can opt out is if you as an entity or an employer are funding a similar. Program for your employees, but it has to meet or exceed the expectation of the states. So the numbers that I'm seeing right now is based on your total payroll. As an employer, it's point eight-eight percent of those wages. There is two elements to this. There is an employer contribution and an employee contribution. Part of both of those contributions go into a family leave and a medical leave. Component of this. The um, the employer has the option about what contribution. You want the employer or the employee to put into it, but both has to do it. It's recommended that the employer put in more than the employee, similar to FICA. Or in our case, para two. So at last week, I was thinking fifty-one forty-nine. But it's a very small amount. Um, I was able to at least go to an estimator on the state's website. And based upon two thousand twenty-four's total number of employees. And our total wages, our contribution breakdowns. Per, I think this is per month. Total, it's like seven thousand dollars annually. It doesn't sound like a lot. When I first heard that this was coming, I thought it was gonna be a really large dollar amount and a really big contribution on the employer's side. I didn't realize there is an employee side to it too. The state starts this January one. People can start applying for these benefits January one, but January or um, it doesn't start getting funded until. After quarter one. So the state itself has prefunded the program. So if anybody makes a claim and gets approved January one, it can start their leave. The state, the legislature funded it. Front loading so that they have funds to give these people. And it doesn't pay them their full salary. It pays them a percentage, kind of like unemployment. Some of the benefits or caveats that an employee can use is they can, if they get. Like we have E S S T time or P T O or vacation or sick time, you can utilize your, as an employee or other benefits. To, you know, bring yourself to full um, uh, wages if you wish, because it's only gonna. Fund a portion of that. And that's up to the employee themselves. But it works really on the same lines as kind of FMLA. Where an employer must keep that position open for that employee at that wage. During the time that person is approved for this leave. The other caveat to that is they, let's say for instance, it's somebody that. Had a child. So that employee could take medical leave of eight weeks. And then family leave on top of that of twelve weeks or a total of twenty. Paid at this percentage um, off to have and bond with that child. Twenty weeks is almost half of a year. That means you have six months almost basically. To leave your, leave your job. Still get paid and then have your job come back or your job will be there when you get back. It's gonna be a lot of obstacles for employers to figure out how to work through the absence. The state has said that they will have guidance. I'm a little skeptical, but we'll see.
No, Misty. Before you, before you even ask.
Don't, don't make a joke about this. The bonding, the bonding that somebody wants to do, a grandchild. Uh, I mean, if you adopt a child, if you had to take care of an, an uh, a parent. All of those qualify. So there's a lot of things that a person could take this leave for. I see it getting abused.
I see myself more in the screwed position at the golf course, always when someone decides to leave me, I'm like.
Yep. Yep, yep, you and probably half the world. You have to be a Minnesota resident to qualify. There's been, well, a lot of portions of this webinar where people are like, well, I work remotely, but I live in Fargo. Do I qualify? I look, I work for a Minnesota business remotely, but I live in Fargo. Do I qualify? They don't. Um, kind of works like unemployment. You have to have a notice of, there is. There is. I mean, I find it quick enough, but I know there is.
How does that work where it says, you know, the very beginning of this? Twenty-three pages, elected and appointed officials.
Yeah, you guys qualify. Yep, I put a big star next to mine. Yep. They'll get, they can get a max of up to ninety percent of their usual wages, up to a maximum of one thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars a week. So there is. A calculation for that. It's, it kind of works on the same lines as unemployment where um, if you make a lot more. They'll probably give you less because of how much your wages. Trying to find that paid leave job protections begin ninety days from the day to hire. That just says you get your job back if you've been with us for ninety days.
Why are you gonna stand that?
Yeah, good question, huh?
To hire somebody in that?
Yeah, you can hire them, but when the person comes back, they get their job and their wage back. FMLA kind of works the same way. You can't kick the person completely out.
See.
You can hire on a temporary basis. Um, but on, but on that standpoint, yes. You may not get the same job back, but you should, you need to, the employer needs to pay you the same wage.
You gotta hold the position for them.
No, you have to hold their wage.
Their wage. It could be force we person and make them quit. I mean.
So.
Make them want to quit. I'm serious.
But I mean, for. Doesn't that affect how the statute's written for elected officials, like Lori being out, for instance? We, you, you would say that she has to be able to come back. See where it.
I think there's gonna be a lot of overlap.
Where that just crosses badly. She would have to be able to come back at that wage. Right. You wouldn't have to hold a position necessarily.
Yeah. Um, I'm just gonna tell you that I'm about, you know, this much into this. I don't have nearly the knowledge about it as I do, but what I do need to do is I need to take the calculation recommendations. That the state has given guidance for the employers and I need to fit it into the general fund budget. Because we will have to pay this quarterly. And I don't know how that's gonna affect the payroll wages. I don't think it's gonna be substantial and probably be like, like I.
I mean, that's, you said seven thousand dollars annually.
Yeah.
What?
It doesn't sound like a lot.
So let me just ask you a basic question.
Sure.
They talk about two different classifications of employers. Can I assume we're a small employer?
No.
Under fifty?
It goes to number of employers and how much your total wages are. Or your average highest wage, I believe.
So even though we have less than fifty, we would qualify as a large employer because.
I, it has to go from your highest number, what you report quarterly, what your highest number of employees are. In that quarter. If you take.
But do we have more than fifty?
You have over twenty-some volunteer firefighters. They're considered your employees. So yes, if you count everybody from every department run, we would be over fifty. Yep. Doesn't matter what time of the year it would be if you take all the seasonal employees and the fire department and then our regular staff who are over fifty.
Yeah, because you guys are considered.
Well, I would add them, but they're basing it off of reporting from unemployment reports from previous, from uh, two thousand twenty-four's years. Yeah. Yeah. So many questions still, but um. Yeah, they can even use, if, if an employee gets short-term or long-term disability, they can still use that to supplement the, the makeup as well. Uh, the state sees this as a win. They see this as a retention thing, just like E S S T time when it kicked off. I don't sit in that wheelhouse. I think the E S S T time is being abused. Based on what it was supposed to be set up for.
Is it like a use it or lose it?
Uh, this particular thing, uh, we pay into this whole state and they use it if people apply for. So we're not just paying for our employees, Misty, we're paying for everybody in the state. Everybody is.
But if I don't use any of that, I don't, I mean, I just lose it. Like if I never, if you never file a claim for a claim.
If you don't need it, no, no. Yeah, it's like, it's like your social security and your FICA Medicare that you're paying into right now. You're paying for other people. Yeah. It's socialism.
So your employees, when you say there's a match from the city and the employee?
Yeah.
So. What I just heard you say is I'm gonna pay into this?
Yeah, as an employee you are.
But I'm never going to benefit from it?
Not unless you pull on it.
Why would I pull on it?
Because you want to benefit.
How would I ever pull on it?
Yep.
Doesn't match my wage and I have.
Other, because you're paying for everybody else that.
You could do something for like two weeks.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter because they're only gonna pay you X amount up to a certain amount.
In your situation, Mike, no.
That you have, the more screwed you get.
Yep. You are right, hundred percent. You are, you're hearing it right. Yep. You're paying into something that you may never use.
A little less motorcycle time.
Yep. I hope by the committee meeting on Wednesday, I'll have a little bit more information because I have the league's webinar. We're, we're, as it pertains to like unemployment um, reporting, every time I, every time I report quarterly reports for payroll. I report wages to unemployment for each individual employee. So that they know if somebody is gonna pull unemployment in the future, what that person was making during that base time. So this works kind of on the same standpoint, but we're considered uh, more classified as a reimbursable account with unemployment. So if somebody um, files unemployment and it hits, and it hits our account for the city of Lackey. And we have to pay, unemployment takes care of the employee and then bills the city. And then we pay it. There are employers out there that pay it every quarter and they estimate it. And then they fill their little pot in case somebody pulls unemployment. This situation will be similar to paying into FICA. Federal tax in the state of Minnesota's um, state taxes too, where we will have to pay it every quarter. And that's gonna be something new I'm gonna have to figure out on our payroll records, but yeah.
Are you lying for the? Consent agenda on the payroll thing? On your payroll that comes out?
Yeah, it probably, it would be, yep. Because it would most likely get paid E F T. I know what you're talking about now. No, I'm just trying to understand your question. Still a lot to learn. There will be, just like when E S S T time came out. There will be a drafted letter that the state of Minnesota will put on their website that we can use that needs to go to all of our employees. To notify them of this because it's not just an employer contribution, it is an employee contribution too. At that point, then that'll get notified that it's starting in January one. Other questions? No, it's bedtime. I don't wanna sleep here. I'm tired.
If there are no other questions, can I make a motion to adjourn?
I will second that one.
All in favor? Be standing there.
I ran out of battery life, so my phone is my recorded. I have time to repeat.
Yeah, that's what he's doing. So the owners of the, I think, uh, change of. Have we been required?
Uh, no.